Okay. Call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise and join me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up is roll call. Jennifer, could you please do a roll call for us?
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
And Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here. Oh, via.
Teleconference.
Teleconference.
That's the end of roll call.
All right, thank you. Everybody is present and accounted for. All right, city manager, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
We do not, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you.
All right, very good. Then we will move into public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We are going to get Councilmember Murray a new microphone, but just a moment. We have a couple people signed up this evening. The first is Saboura Dean, and if you would approach the podium, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hello, all. Hello, familiar faces. My name is Saboura Dean. I served with our DEI Commission in Mount Lake Terrace. I've been a resident since 2012, 13? 13. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm here to ask the city of Mount Lake Terrace to give a voice to the voiceless. The average age of those being killed in Palestine right now is five years old. The age of children learning to read, get ready to start school, dreaming of their futures in candy and holidays. Twenty-five thousand Palestinian orphans have been created since October 8th. As of 12/19, 26,612 civilians have been killed in Palestine while Palestinian men dig through the rubble with their bare hands, looking for family and strangers alike. Gaza has been under military occupation for decades now. Their food, water, electricity, medical supplies, and more are only allowed through dependent on Israeli government control. Hospitals, schools, refugee camps, churches, mosques, and civilian housing have all been targeted by Israeli army strikes. Collective punishment has been ongoing for more than the last two months, but more so focused on those times, and we cannot stand by and support these war crimes. I am asking the city to write a resolution saying that we as a city support a permanent ceasefire, an immediate ceasefire in Palestine and Israel. Cease firing rockets, guns, and tanks. Cease blocking aid. Cease blocking food, water, and human rights. Cease settler colonialism. Cease apartheid. Cease segregation. Cease displacement. Cease blocking the right of return of refugees since 1947. We as a city, we recite land acknowledgements to remind us of the amorality of violently colonizing a land where others already live. Let us live the standards of human rights. Right to safety, right to home, right to self-determination, and the right to freedom. Let our voices carry from city to county to state to country. While our president might claim no red lines to this massacre, we say you do not speak for us. Let us not continue to sit idly by as we watch small children carry the dead bodies of even smaller children, day after day. We will not be represented by this genocide, not with our tax money, not with our support, not in our name. I ask the city to consider joining Bellingham, Seattle, Oakland, Dearborn, and many other cities across the country that are speaking up and saying that we will not support what is happening. We do not say that we are behind these atrocious war crimes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right.
Next is Sean Dean. If you could state your name for the record, please. You'll have five minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Sean Dean. Sorry. My name is Sean Dean, and I have a kid here right now, so I apologize. I live in Mount Lake Terrace with my wife Saboura, who just spoke. We've been here since fiscal year 2012, when we purchased our house. And I work at various healthcare facilities in the area, particularly Ritten Valley Medical Center for the district hospital, in order to bring access to people who have limited access. I will briefly ask the same thing that my wife did, but I want to highlight why I think it would look good on Mount Lake Terrace. And I think that we all know that. I think everyone in the room is hip to Mount Lake Terrace and how we are a diverse community, and we actually try to do what we talk about. And we have provided access to people with limited access. We have multiple STEM schools, a lot of opportunities for a small volume of people that generate a large volume of revenue. I think that Mount Lake Terrace is actually one of the up-and-coming cities in the area, and I think it's really important that we put the right badge on, and a ceasefire is the right badge. I don't think that you have to be rocket science to understand that hurting people who have no way of defending themselves, who have no means of communication other than TikTok, who have no energy, no water, no hospitals. I work in a hospital, and I know how hard it is to do the right job with all of the right equipment and all of the right support. I can only imagine what these people are going through, and the only way to save whoever's left is a ceasefire. I ask you to consider this as a city, for those listening at home and those who have the power to make change. This is a really important thing to put our name on, and I would ask you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you again for your comments.
Next is Kathleen. Can you state your first and last name for the record?
I'm Kathleen Thomas. I've been a resident of Mount Lake Terrace for three years and a resident of the Pacific Northwest since 1997. I was inspired to come here tonight and speak up by a friend of mine who was in Seattle a couple weeks ago. She's a Canadian violinist, and she is Jewish. At the beginning of her show, she said that she questioned if she should even go on tour because she'd been so troubled by the events in Palestine and how silent her American friends seemed, and she wanted to know why. She asked at the beginning of the show why, and not in a rhetorical fashion, but she really wanted to know why. Why so many good people that she knew cared weren't saying anything about the devastation in Palestine. So many of us are sitting with this on our minds, not sure what to say. So many of us are not sure our voice even has a place in the conversation, that maybe we don't understand the nuance, maybe we don't want to seem insensitive, or maybe we don't feel we understand the thousands of years of history. But it is our trying to be so careful in what we say that we do nothing. Our neighbors hear our silence, and they stay silent, too, many of them wondering if their feelings are valid, and if they are Muslim or Jewish, if they are even welcome here. So here it goes. Here's how I feel. I feel we must not conflate the justifications of history with excuses for horror. There's no excuse for the tens of thousands of Palestinians dead, babies and children, no excuse for the millions displaced, sick, hungry, and wounded. This is genocide. There has been no regard for innocent life under the guise of seeking out Hamas, even for Israel's own people. There is no excuse for the mainstreaming of anti-Muslim hate and antisemitism occurring in the United States and around the world. There is no excuse for those of us who are privileged enough to not be in danger to speak up and say never again, never again. No more genocide, no more. And Mount Lake Terrace should stand up for that. Sometimes it's the smallest voices that have the most influence in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other signed up?
None other have signed up.
Anybody in the online audience?
If anyone in the online audience would like to speak, please use the hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. There's no online comment.
All right, and finally, any written comments submitted?
Two were submitted to council, two written comments via email.
Very good. And everybody's had a chance to see those. They were, okay. But it was emailed.
They were emailed, yes.
Have a chance to read that. And it's been that for the record, then?
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to consent calendar. Does anybody wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Murray.
All right, we'll see if this works. It does. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I move that we approve the consent calendar items A through F.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. And opposed. All right, consent calendar is approved unanimously. Moving into the public hearing and vote on the tree code ordinance. Laura Reed, our stormwater manager, will share with us. Laura.
Just a moment while I get set up here. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'm here again to share with you the tree code update ordinance, which I now see is not being shown here, so I need to, sorry, go back and try to share my slideshow. Okay, great. Okay, this is the tree code update ordinance. I'd just like to note that there has been, there is one change that has happened since the last city council meeting about this on the 14th. I've added an intent to preserve existing street trees where possible, based on Councilmember Murray's input. This tree code ordinance does not apply to single-family residential properties, except for heritage trees, if desired by the property owner. This does not restrict any homeowners in Mount Lake Terrace from any type of tree work, including tree removal. This code update applies to development and redevelopment. I think it's a fair question to ask, who wrote this code? This ordinance was developed by a residential developer and city staff team, and some of those folks are here today. If you could just rise when I say your name, Susan Kuhn, who is an interested MLT resident, and also Audrey Meyer of the MLT Tree Board and the founder of the Ivy League. Thank you. We also had Matt Innani, a developer from Sierra Construction, Tim Seed, who's a city intern and UDub graduate student, and myself. We received quite a bit of technical assistance from local experts, foresters, planners, and arborists. I just want to say, this was a great team. They were really open-minded, they were very thoughtful, dedicated, and they were very considerate of what the impacts of changing the code might be on people and on folks who would be affected, such as the development community. They did a lot of research, they proposed a lot of really good solutions to problems, and I was really happy to have the chance to work with them. This is the process that we use to update the code. As you might remember, this code has not been substantially updated since 1995, and in that interim, we have fallen behind some of our neighboring cities in terms of how we manage trees. So in order to revise the code, we started with two questions. You know, what do residents want, and what do our neighboring cities do? How can we learn from them? We did a lot of research, we talked with experts, we talked about what the implications might be. Then there was a phase of extensive community outreach and development of the draft code. We talked to folks through, at summer festivals, we had a survey that went out on a line and had 191 respondents. There was lots of meetings with the Tree Board, with DEIC. The code went out during the CEPA review process. There was also a planning commission meeting and public hearing, and the development community had the opportunity to review the draft code. Anyone who was on the city's distribution list got a copy and was able to comment. The next phase was to negotiate responsibility for implementing the new code to various city departments, and of course, legal review, and there were many amendments that happened to the draft code as necessary for that part of, that phase of the development. And now we are at the public hearing and decision by city council. As you can see from this matrix, we compared our current code to that of Lynwood, Edmunds, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, and Briar, and also Kirkland, because they had just recently revised their tree code, and we wanted to learn from their experience. So there's been, there's a variety of different ways that people handle trees, but you can see from this that Mount Lake Terrace is the only city among all of these that does not have a tree fee in lieu and tree fund, and that's one thing we want to change through this update. I'm just going to briefly go over the different components to the code. The first section is the development of a heritage tree program to protect large and distinctive trees. Trees must be 36 inches in diameter to qualify and have some distinctive characteristic, special species, age, historical value, that kind of thing. On private property, only the property owner can nominate a heritage tree, but for public property, anyone can nominate a heritage tree. And each heritage tree would be recognized with a plaque and recorded on documentation that runs with the property. This is necessary because without this, there is no teeth to the protection for the tree. But it is possible to delist the tree if the property owner wishes to do so. We added some new terms, qualified arborists, grove, tree protection zone, viable tree, and we removed significant vegetation because it's really outdated and doesn't have anything to do with tree protection. This is the changes to retention requirements, which is used to maintain and grow tree canopy in the city. We increased the tree retention percentage from 20% to 25% and removed the 10 significant tree minimum. There were exemptions for special situations, such as restoration projects and required frontage improvements, incentives for higher levels of tree protection above the minimum, and the priority is tree retention and tree replacement. But if a site does not support full tree retention and/or tree replacement, tree fee in lieu is allowed. To protect the trees for the future that we're looking at, we made some changes to the number of trees, replacement trees required. So the larger the tree removed, the more replacement trees are required. For smaller trees, it could be as few as three trees, but for trees that are more than 48 inches, it would be 10 trees, 10 replacement trees. And these replacement trees are in addition to permit-required landscaping, which is part of every development. The tree replacement fee in lieu is only for trees that cannot be retained or replaced on-site, and this is a dollar value for each replacement tree, which will be paid by the developer when a tree is removed on-site. Affordable housing must follow all the tree retention and replacement requirements, but is exempt from paying fee in lieu, and our intent there is to lower barriers to affordable housing in the city. The tree fund would be funded by fee in lieu, fines from illegal tree clearing, donations, grants, other monies that's allocated by city council. Other cities use this to pay for tree vouchers for residents, arborist services, better tree maintenance, more trees on public property, including street trees, acquiring wooded areas for parks and open space, and then education and outreach on tree benefits. The way this would work is that the city would manage the fund, and oversight would be provided by the Tree Board, which consists of volunteers from the community. Upgraded, updated tree protection is designed to increase retained tree survival. So if work has to be done within the tree protection zone, low-impact methods must be used. There's an example of this shown here on how to do a utility cut without directly impacting tree roots. This also includes preventative mitigation for retained trees, including mulching and watering. The last component is violations enforcement and penalties. This is only appropriate for three specific types of situations. If our trees are removed before tree retention plan removal on a development, if there are trees that are shown to be retained on a plan and are removed anyway, or heritage trees. The fine is $1,500 per inch of diameter tree removed. This seems like a lot, but when you compare this to the value of an additional housing unit, it is a relatively small amount of money. And that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions or any discussion?
Does anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Murray, and then Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Laura, for coming back, and appreciate you making the adjustment to clarify intent. I did have one question. So you mentioned the Tree Board will oversee those funds. Can you remind us, are all of the Tree Board members currently part of RPAC, our Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Or can you talk more about how those folks are chosen?
Yes, they are currently the RPAC Committee, Recreation and Parks, but this code amendment, I'm sorry, ordinance allows for the development of a separate Tree Board in the future, if decided by council. Great, thank you.
And Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. I know last time we talked about the cost of the trees, and just a couple things that just quickly came to mind is the fiasco that happened down in Edmunds and the gas tanks. It was cheaper to take down the forest and pay the fines because of what they could put up. Do we have anything in place, and I know you and Audrey talked about it, how we have to go back and look at this, but this is something that we should get into place, is, do we send a message? I mean, anybody can figure out how to get rid of a tree and how to kill a tree, and so is there anything else that we could put to kind of send a message, you know, don't miss and try and get around the rules? Because a lot of times, and I'm understanding $1,500 can add up really quick, but maybe in the future, you could look at, you know, we understand that there's ways around getting around not having a tree in a certain area, and we've had that happen in our city many years ago, too, where they just didn't care, and they took down the trees anyhow, and it wasn't because we should have had better rules in place at the time, but looking at, you know, sending that message, you know, to, you know, please follow the rules and take it seriously. And so I'm hoping when you guys look at it next time, you'll look at those different ways of how people have gotten around things in the past. Thank you.
Yes, I think that's an excellent point. The implementation for this ordinance is deliberately delayed three months to give us an opportunity to do public outreach, and so that, I think, education and outreach on, this is our new, you know, if this is adopted, then this is our new way of doing things, is very important. Also, there is an effort underfoot to get a urban forestry management plan for the city, and I think that that's something that should be considered as part of that plan.
And next question would be, so if I knew, if I was a builder and I had three months, I would just take them down now. Is that three months too long a period of time? Do we know what areas are about to be built on in the next three months?
Well, I think that it may be a concern, but I think also that anybody who wants to work twice in the city of Mount Lake Terrace might be interested in preserving the relationship with the city by not doing something that would be clearly, you know, against the city's interests. So I'm thinking that it is unlikely to happen, but it is something to be watching out for.
And when, so sorry, Laura.
No, no, it's fine.
You bring up more questions. What do you mean that they think twice? And it's, just being here so long, I've seen things go sideways so quick on certain things that sometimes I serve more as a skeptic sometimes, because I have seen things that I never thought would happen, happen. And so can you maybe explain how they would understand that they couldn't work twice with the city if they broke the rules?
Well.
Because if they already have property in the city? And maybe I'm misinterpreting it, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I mean, the three-month period to do the implementation was requested by the Community and Economic Development Director, Kristi Osborne, who really helped in getting this process going, because we can't just flip a switch. We need to be able to have, you know, develop forms, process, get everything going so that when somebody tries to apply for a heritage tree or tries to apply for a development under the new rules, there's a system in place for them to follow. So it is necessary, I think, to have a little bit of lag time to make things happen. That said, there's no controlling everybody's actions.
And you're doing a great job answering, too.
Yeah.
It's just always being curious. So I'm always asking those curious questions, because a lot of times, things go unasked, and you always wonder, and so I'm just asking. Well, thank you.
No, thank you. Those are good questions. I wish I could.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. A question and then a comment slash request. So the question's really more a point of clarification. Point of clarification, where do churches fall in this conversation? Are they impacted by this potential code? Are they actually, as you just gave the disclaimer, this doesn't impact residents? Where are they in this?
Well, this code comes into play when a property goes into redevelopment. So they're making a change to the way that the property functions. So if a church sells their property for development, it would be subject to this. But if a church is just operating.
Gotcha, so it's only for redevelopment?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I'll have a second request. So I'll move to the original question, or next, whatever. However this vote goes, and if it goes affirmative, yay, whenever we go to communicate this, I appreciate that we're going to make it clear to residents that this doesn't impact them, but if we can somehow use this same ringing this bell to encourage them not to just take trees down, and by that, I'm going to recommend or suggest or encourage you to consider, out of Seattle, they have a wildlife tree program. If you need to see that, come to my house. We had a tree fail in the very, very prominent spot of the front yard, and we could have taken it down and done whatever we wanted, and we decided to leave it up as a wildlife tree, because one of my neighbors had had this happen, and we saw the little placard. Never heard of this before, and I will just tell you, especially with these young people in front of us right now, it is the coolest thing we have ever had in the front yard. It now has woodpeckers that come back every year, and they have to wait in line to live in it. in it. So they've created four different entries and literally created a condo inside of our tree. How cool is that? We had a person who likes fungus walk by and just show us things we didn't even envision were happening on this tree, meaning that it's a host tree. But it's just one of those things where, again, when I think about livable cities, when I think about heritage trees, there's all kinds of ways that our trees are teaching us lessons that most people walk right on by or only see it as a problem and want to remove it. And I will just say that had we removed it and gone the direction, the world would have kept spinning. But wow, the stories that I get just by sitting in my front room, looking out that window for free every day, it's amazing. So just want to put that out there. If there's a way, again, I appreciate this is about selling and redevelopment, but I hear chainsaws way too much. And I'm here in the city center, and I do everything except go over and ask them, how are you able to do this? And I mean that morally most times. So I don't because I'm not that guy, but I'm feeling it in my heart. And I have had trees come down and take my fence down. So I get it, it costs to have these trees and stuff like that, but again, in the spirit of protect the canopy, there's a lot of things we can be doing that doesn't require this, but may just require people knowing it's an option. So again, wildlife tree would be the option. And then I'll go back to my last comment and recommendation, which is, I will personally say, if you were to bring something forward about the canopy from a residential standpoint, I would entertain hearing what that is. So I appreciate that we started with the people who want to do business here, but it's actually those of us who live here every day that are doing the most promise or lack there of hope, everyday choices that we make. So that would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Do we have any other comments or questions? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question is regarding tree replacement. If they have to replace trees, are they to use our list of those recommended trees we have for street planning, or do we have a list they have to go through?
Yes, there is a list that's available online, but it's not the end of everything. You know, you could propose something that wasn't on the list as part of a development plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's some guiding things for them?
Right. There's a prohibited tree list, which would be invasive trees that we don't want more of, so that there's also an approved or recommended list.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any final questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Councilmember?
Mayor Protem, I move we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody signed up to testify on the public hearing or share their thoughts, comments?
No one has signed up.
All right, do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to say, share anything? Seeing, yes, please, please come forward to, if you'd like to say something about the tree ordinance, please come forward to the public comment, give your name and address. And you have three minutes, five minutes, sorry, five minutes.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. My name is Ann Bjornstad. I've been a resident of Mount Lake Terrace, very fortunately, for the past 35 years. I want to echo and applaud Councilmember Woodward's comments regarding wildlife and safety trees for, and as well as the importance of maintaining the canopy for not only our wildlife, but for our lives with regard to making sure that we have, you know, our trees exchange oxygen and literally the air we breathe depends on our trees. So I applaud the city and for coming forward and doing this. And I also want to acknowledge all of the Parks Department for the hard work and the maintenance and the daily things that they do that we don't necessarily notice, but they certainly are deserving of our appreciation. And that's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Any others? All right, and any written public comment on this topic?
There was no written comment on this topic.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you want me to check online?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right, please do.
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to comment on this agenda item, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice, there are no comments.
Okay, very good. Now, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Councilmember Woodard.
So moved, I guess, or a motion to close the public hearing?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. We now will bring the motion, do we have a motion to consider on the tree ordinance? Anybody?
I move that we consider the tree ordinance.
How about adopt or?
I move that we even adopt the tree ordinance.
Very good. We have a motion to adopt the tree ordinance. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any final comments before we vote? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'll just keep my comments in sort of the theme of appreciation, I think. I really love what was just said in the public comment about the benefits of canopy and trees, and I think we can go on about that. You know, I think we're unanimously supportive of trees and all the benefits. But I also wanted to give kudos to you, Laura, and everybody else here. I know that this has been something we've been talking about for quite a while, and I know that Audrey and others in the crowd have put a lot of thought and effort into advocating for this, and I think this is really a great example of what, you know, a well-supported staff with time and capacity can do in terms of, you know, sort of addressing things on residents' minds. And I think, you know, it perhaps doesn't do all the things we'd like, but especially, you know, if this is a stepping stone to urban forestry program or, you know, more things that sort of meet the need of sort of supporting our suburban sort of forestry and green spaces, it's, I think, kudos to you and everyone involved, I think. I have great hope that we do more things like this in the future, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan, any other comments? If not, we will vote. All those in favor of adopting the tree code ordinance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, tree code ordinance is adopted unanimously. Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will now discuss the ordinance for the 2023-24 biennial budget amendment with Council, I'm sorry, with Deputy City Manager Carolyn Hope.
Thank you, just give me one moment.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be with you tonight. I'm here standing in for Finance Director Janelle Lewis, who's on vacation this week. Tonight is the second public hearing and presentation about the proposed budget amendments for the 2023-24 budget. And I did want to note that we updated the presentation and the ordinance later in this afternoon. There was a missing exhibit in the ordinance, C1, which was provided in your memo last week, but just had been omitted from the ordinance. So that is now in there for your consideration. Tonight, we're here to discuss, hold a public hearing and vote on the proposed budget amendments. And I'll just give a little overview of the amendment process and the proposed budget amendments, and we can have time for discussion. We go through budget amendments for a number of reasons. Often, there are changes to revenues and expenses throughout the year. We have to adjust balances and interfund transfers, and sometimes we have to adjust capital project timing and related matters. These are a list of proposed changes to expenditures in the budget amendments. At a high level, some of the key changes are adding additional funding for the nonrepresented staff salary survey adjustments that we brought to you recently. There were several changes related to the annexation into the Fire District. There were increases in legal costs, increases in our insurance premiums, and we're seeking a match for a grant to install EV charging stations in three locations throughout the city, and there were several other items. If there's any explanation that you need on any of these items, I'm happy to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions on any of the items? Seeing no questions?
Okay.
Please carry on.
And there were four proposed budget amendments related to revenues, one again related to the annexation into the Fire District, and three grants that were added throughout the So tonight, after the public hearing, we're seeking a council vote on an ordinance to consider the proposed amendments in the budget.
All right. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Do we have any other questions or discussion thoughts on proposal before us? Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. I know we talked about the summary of proposed amendments, but I didn't ask about the supplement for the LTAC grant funding amount. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. Typically, the commission is looking at spending approximately $25,000 a year, and we had a lower amount in the budget. It was about $18,000. So the Finance Director wanted to make that more accurate to what the spending amount was.
Very good, thank you.
So can you, because usually it's always been $25,000. It went down to $18,000, and can you remind me why, and now we're making it back up to $25,000?
I don't know why it was put in the budget at $18,000, but she's trying to make that correction here.
Because why I bring that up, and I'll keep on saying it till the cows come home, is looking at that funding, because we always ask people who apply for that fund to look out for funds on other things, too, but we're also looking at ways to have the arts and tour de terrace better in the way of functioning facilities. And so I'm hoping that our city will look into seeing if some of that funding could be saved into building something in the park or updating a room or doing something else.
Yes, we've been looking into that.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to open the public hearing on the ordinance for the 23 through 2024 biennial budget amendment.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All of those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody signed up for testifying in the public?
Nobody has signed up.
All right, do we have anybody in the online audience?
If there's anybody in the online audience who would like to speak to this agenda item, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice, there are no public comments. And none were submitted in writing.
All right, nothing submitted in writing. Anybody in the audience with final chance would like to comment on the budget? All right, looks like we are ready to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Ryan.
I move to close public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. We now are ready to consider the amendment to the budget. Anybody want to put a motion on the table to adopt the ordinance for the 2023-24 biennial budget amendment? Councilmember Woodard.
As you just said, I move to adopt the, I just lost track of where we are, ordinance for the 2023-24 biennial budget amendment.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before we consider it? Seeing no discussion, call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance for the 2023-24 biennial budget amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, motion is adopted unanimously. We will now move into the next public hearing. Or not. Actually, we will review and consider the lease agreement for the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse, and that will be our Recreation Parks Director, Jeff Betts. Jeff?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation Parks Director for the city, and I'm joined here tonight by, we have Daniel Johnson, CEO of Edmonds Waterfront Center, and Elizabeth Zeller, she's Executive Director for the Lake Ballenger Center. So before I hand off to them, they're going to do a brief presentation, I just wanted to summarize some of the things that we talked about last week with the lease agreement. So the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse is located at Ballenger Park, and it was a former golf clubhouse, and it was leased to the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group in 2013. So before that, if anybody remembers, they were located right off 56th in a church, right off 56th. They're a very, very, very small area that this was an expansion for them to be able to utilize, the Community Clubhouse. So the first six years that they operated there, they had some bumps here and there, but they did persevere, and then the pandemic happened. And that event gutted a lot of recreation programming around the country and around the world, really. So as it changed programming here, it also put a huge dent in their membership and their board as well, and their budget. So over those years, they've started to reach out and try to find additional partners, and one of those was the Edmonds Waterfront Center. So the current lease for this agreement expires at the end of this month, December 31st, 2023, and that was two five-year terms, so it was a total of 10 years, that lease agreement. The new lease agreement that's before you is a partnership with the Edmonds Waterfront Center, which would be joining with the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors to provide programming here in Mount Lake Terrace. So it once again is a five-year lease with a single five-year extension option, and includes 100 hours annually of city use, which is an increase from the previous lease agreement as well. The facility is still open to the general public for programs and rentals, so anybody, whether a Mount Lake Terrace resident or Edmonds or Shoreline or wherever you're from, you can come use the building. It doesn't matter your age, all ages are welcome. The lease amount is $10 a year, and as well as any leasehold excise taxes that are due. It also includes rental forgiveness for the time period from June through the end of this month, and that totals $10,500. So senior programming, just to mention side note that I did not discuss last week, but when you look at the Recreation and Parks Open Space Master Plan, that was one of the priorities outlined. That's something that we do not do very well, to be candid, as far as recreation of parks. So it was one of the weaknesses that were outlined, and it was outlined in that as well that the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group does tackle that, and it's not something that we do put a lot of time into due to space construction and also just not necessarily having everything that's necessary to do that kind of programming. So at this time, I think I would hand off to these two, and I think, Daniel, you wanted to speak first? Okay, great.
Thank you, Jeff. We're happy to be here. Thanks for inviting us. I want to give you a little bit of background of the Edmonds Senior Center, DB I want to give you a little bit of background of the Edmonds Senior Center, DBA, Edmonds Waterfront Center, just to give you a context of where we've come from and where we're going, and how I think this partnership could benefit both communities. It was 1967 when the South County Senior Center formed. That was then later became Edmonds Senior Center, and I think most of you have probably visited the old building down there on the waterfront spectacular site, and that building and the land was owned by the City of Edmonds. And that building was intended for small boat storage. So it was, once the port had put in the marina, a lot of the small mom-and-pop operations went out of business, and so the gentleman who owned the building allowed the Senior Center to operate there. And we operated there for almost 50 years, and the building had outlived its useful life, and it needed to be replaced, and the City of Edmonds didn't have the money to build a new building. So the board asked, approached the city and asked if they would be willing to extend a long-term lease in exchange for the seniors raising the money to build a new center for people of all generations. And so that was granted, and I got involved nine years ago when the city had agreed to do this, and the seniors realized they hadn't raised money before, and they needed to raise $9 million at that time, which later became $17 million. I, in my career, I was the CEO for Boys and Girls Clubs of King County, and so I ran that operation for 18 years, and we did a lot of remodels and agreements with different municipalities and housing authorities and school districts. And so basically, we raised the money, and we built the building in 2019, and we demolished it. And this is where the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center steps in, because we committed to continuing our programs during construction. And so we were in 15 different sites, and one of our main sites was here in Mount Lake Terrace, where we had several of our programs operating during construction. So we've had sort of a long history there. And then when the pandemic hit, it affected our construction as well, but we persevered, and then we opened this new center. And one of the big changes was, we wanted to do more than a senior center. We wanted to certainly continue to serve seniors. That's our core mission, and that's in our bylaws, and that hasn't changed. But the research was clear that those who thrive as seniors have people of different ages in their lives. And so we wanted to create a multi-generational, multicultural center. So that's what we set out to do. Also, in our bylaws, it states that we are also committed to supporting other senior centers and other nonprofits in the community. So when, we were certainly aware of, Elizabeth and I have known each other, and we see each other at meetings, and we became aware of some of the struggles they were having restarting after COVID. And so we're actually just four miles from the center at the clubhouse there. So we discussed different ways that we could reactivate the space, and we committed to relocating three of our larger programs, our ballroom dancing, which is done with live music every Friday, line dancing, and our duplicate bridge. So we moved those three programs over. About that same time, Elizabeth renegotiated an agreement with Homage, who provides the congregate meals for 11 different centers in Snohomish County. And so what they had done for, well, three years, actually, was the volunteers and board worked together to provide curbside meals for Mount Lake Terrace residents, up to 100 on any given day, three days a week. And so, and it was spectacular, very inspiring. And then what they realized was it was time to end the curbside everyone else had, and then to bring them inside, because there's two components, the nutrition piece and then also social connections. So those are the two things that they were trying to commit. So that new agreement was negotiated, and it was for originally 30 people, and then 30 meals three times a week, and now because of its success, it's now been increased to 40. So we wanted to explore how we can continue to support. They were having difficulty with staffing. Elizabeth had been working without pay. Their, the board, which Jeff had commented was, most had resigned. So we stepped in because they needed to, we reconstituted a board from a subcommittee of our board, and made sure that they were going to get their county funding, which is $35,000, or $23,000 a year, and that was just confirmed yesterday. So what this lease contemplates is sort of formalizing this agreement and allowing us to continue to support, ensuring that they have, that you maintain the identity here, and all resources that are raised for this center remain here. That's required. But in the last few months, we were also able to raise $50,000 from local families because they believed in this vision of sort of restarting, rebooting the senior center. So maybe I should turn this over to Elizabeth to confirm that what I said was accurate. And then I know that, I listened to your study session, and so I know that there are many questions that were raised, and so I'm prepared to answer any of those that were.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Zeller, Executive Director at Lake Ballenger Center. I didn't have to introduce myself again. I have been, I started down in that position with volunteering at the curbside food program we were doing during the pandemic, and it was absolutely addictive, working with the community, enduring such a time of struggle to have something positive, to connect with these people, even though it was only through a car door, in a car window, but, and be able to support the community. We did programs with South County Fire and brought in a vaccine clinic in our parking lot. I think half of our works department came to that, and we were able to do some visits to homebound seniors to make sure everyone got vaccinated during that time. With the amount of staff we had, which is about one and a half FTE, we carried on as we could through that. We brought back clinical foot care and yoga and a lot of activities, many of them were outside, but what we could safely, but we struggled to reopen, partially because of the board resignations, and in hindsight, it was because our board president had been very, very ill. But, and then, yes, I was the last person standing. So I love this, I moved to the city in 2018. I love it. I can see the lake from the street out in front of my house. It's, I consider Lake Ballenger Park, you know, a privilege to have. I'm so thrilled that it was preserved and used for green space. But for the senior programming, it is a very important place to many of our seniors. We have a great number of seniors who live right across the street in some of the condos and estates, and it is a lifeline for them that they were missing. We know that seniors became isolated during the pandemic, and it's part of why we brought back the congregate meal program. It was a little sketchy at first. People didn't know how to talk to each other over lunch anymore, but we've brought back a lot of social activities and people in the building, and we've also gone the multi-age, multi-generational, multicultural way, which is, we had about six really dedicated high school students working there this summer as kind of intern volunteers doing their community service hours, and the energy change amongst the seniors was very, it was just exciting, and we're smiling. I think we need to do more work in kind of sharing between our generations. We had Veterans Day when we had, one of our lunchers was Roy, who's 99, and was a World War II veteran, and we had a 93-year-old Korean POW veteran, and just, they were both sitting in these chairs. The stories, I think we need to capture, too. But the experience of our seniors is something that a lot of us don't ask. Not everybody lives in a house or in a neighborhood near their grandparents or with multi-generational families, so bringing more people in to share would be wonderful. Getting off topic. And I think it's just, it's a lifeline for a lot of people. We didn't realize how much we were dependent on for that food. Those meals that we provide for some people, that is their meal that day. Luckily, in partnership with Homage, our chef prepares so much food, most people leave with the to-go box, so they at least have some dinner. But there's just services that we can even meet a greater need for in that place and in the city, and I'd love to be a part of that. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Jeff, did you have any final comments before we start asking some questions?
No, absolutely. We're here for any discussion, comments, questions.
All right.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for all of you being here to discuss this important issue. Do we have any questions? I know we do. So council member, I'll start on my left, Councilmember Woodard.
Yeah, I'll get mine out of the way. First, let me just say, great to see you. Follow that up with, thank you for listening to the study session. I know you listen to it intently, and you already know what our questions are. So that said, I'll get my two out of the way, because I think you've already addressed them. The first one being about the resources, so I don't think you have to answer that any further than just confirm that, let's just keep it simple, any revenue streams gained profit-wise, for lack of a crude way of putting it, would remain reinvested back in the center that it was.
That's correct.
Gathered from. Correct. Awesome. And then you just said you were going multicultural, which was my second part. I know I have heard from the community that the language barrier is one of the issues that they deal with, and want to make sure that if we did some programming, that we have an intentional way to make sure we're not just focusing on our English-speaking seniors, because across the board, everybody was feeling it. So it sounded like you are working towards that, but I give you space to speak to that, and that'd be the end of my questions.
I'll say a word, and then I'll, I mean, like all nonprofits, I think most companies, we're all trying to be inclusive, committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we learned quickly that you need to do more than, say, everyone's welcome and open the doors. And eight of our 23 board members represent different communities of color, so we intentionally made sure that they were at the table, which, and we have a diverse staff. And with those board members, they were able to introduce us to leadership, leaders in different communities, and then the next step was to form partnerships, and we were, we offer free cultural community events at the Waterfront Center, bringing their communities to help and bring different, diverse communities together. And then from that, we've also now formed partnerships with them. So we do other programs that we offer, like we have the County Contract for Sheba, the statewide health benefit advisor program, helping those of us eventually who will turn 65 will qualify for Medicare, and it's something to navigate. And we have the county contracts. We want to make sure that we're bringing those resources here to Mount Lake Terrace, and then also to some of our other community partners. So that's how we look at it, is forming those kind of long-term, meaningful partnerships.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. You probably know some of our questions, so I'm hoping you can answer those. I don't have them all in front of me, but I have some questions. One of them is, how come we have to give 24-hour notice before the city can come in and inspect?
That's a standard landlord lease agreement language. It's similar to what we had previously, and I think it also mentions in there that city staff and the public are welcome at all times during open hours, but if we want to do an official inspection, the landlord would say that city manager would like to do a walk through the facility. That's common courtesy to give them that 24-hour notice.
And then my next question is, the $10,500, how come we didn't apply for COVID funds, and is that gifting public monies?
No, I believe that there is specific language within. We did apply CARES Act funding previously. You remember in 2020 that we did forgive some of that funding, and that was one of the reasons why they did not have to pay the lease during those times until, I think the governor's order released that about a year ago, November. So, no, I think that, I think that, I mean, I would defer to the city attorney, but the city attorney did review this language and approved it and verified that it's not a gift of public funds.
Is that who's filling in? I'm sorry, can't see that far. Alec, is our city, oh.
Good evening. Yeah, probably, there's likely not an issue with gift of public funds, given the consideration the city's receiving in return through having this available to the citizens.
And can I ask, are we getting a different city attorney at our, so I haven't met you, and I'm, introduce us, but do we have a different city attorney at each of our meetings now? Has something changed with city attorney?
I can, I can answer that. So, no, Hillary is still our city attorney, however, during the holidays and, during the holidays and personal considerations. Occasionally, we will have someone step in that represents the same firm, and that's why we tend to go with a firm and not a sole practitioner.
Oh, I'm glad to hear it's that reason. And can I ask, what kind of repairs are you going to make in the next six months that will be below $500?
Not sure the reference.
It says that repairs can only be every six months, and they have to be, and you can only, I guess, invest $500 into the building?
No, I think that, I mean, just from what you said, not me having it in front of me at the moment, I think that refers to the improvements the seniors would make without having the city approval. So we want to make sure that if they're going to do major capital improvements, that they're working with city staff, and that we have the proper permits and proper contractor licenses and those kinds of considerations. I believe that's the section you're referring to.
I didn't write down this section. I just wrote down the dollar amount. And then, do we have a list of the current 200 members right now?
Don't have one with me. It's in a database that we have, but it's, I don't have it with me, yes.
So we have all, are they all the ones that we had pre-pandemic, or?
No, it has changed a lot. It has evolved. There were many people who just forgot, and which is understandable, to renew during the pandemic, because they hadn't been there in a while. Many of them are coming back. I keep trying to encourage people to come back. We've gained many new members through our partnership with the Edmonds Waterfront Center, and there are members who live right in our community as well. The duplicate bridge program was like 40 players usually at least on a Monday, and many of them all joined because they wanted to support the work we were doing down there at the center. And we've also gotten more memberships from some of the communities that come in and rent the lucky room for events. We've, kind of speaking to the multicultural, but because we don't have a required caterer, and because we're a little more casual than some of the other places, we're more affordable and more reachable for all income brackets. And we also provide a lot of nonprofit services, both to the school district and everything. We want to support our local community nonprofits, but those people have brought in and joined because I invite them to come in and be part of what we're trying to rebuild there. And then we actually had, in the early part of the summer, we had a lot of, we opened a family membership level, and we had some kids that were begging their moms to join, because they got a discount on ice cream. But we, you know, we could sell ice cream into the park, and, but yes, we have more of an age range now. There's still some old members who we haven't heard from. We were doing wellness calls all through the pandemic to check on people, but we're kind of trying to make that more multicultural, make it more multi-generational, and just be a hub, a gem there in the park for everybody here to use and to fall in love with, hopefully.
And Elizabeth, thank you for saying wellness calls. That means a lot, because now having to deal a lot with senior issues, not only being one, but having to take care of, well, she takes care of me, I should say, but my question I didn't ask last time, and I wanted to, because, you know, you and I have talked quite a few times, is will you be staying on as the director then?
Hope and goal and wish.
Yes.
And plan.
Okay. And then are there, who is on the board right now? Are there any Mount Lake Terrace people?
That's our goal. We have, the seven that are on the board right now are not. They're not from Mount Lake Terrace. They are using the services down here. They come down for our meetings, and then they participate in line dancing. They're very much invested, but we are committed to having board representation from people, you know, from Mount Lake Terrace. One of the board members, former board members, lives in Mount Lake Terrace, and she's been an ongoing consultant, you know, provides counsel to us.
Can I ask, who is that?
It's kind of Lovelace, what's her first, Shirley Lovelace. Shirley Lovelace.
Sorry, I thought you were going to say Judy Smith, so that's why I was asking.
No.
We've lost so many of our seniors, and what's sad, and that's why I asked you about the 200, is our senior center used to be quite active, and we'd have people actively involved. is our senior center used to be quite active and we'd have people actively involved. We had like seniors that had all raised their kids together, so it was a group of people. And it just seems a lot of times that, especially during the pandemic, things were going down and the activities were less and less. And one of the things I find is a lot of seniors, and this is a big thing, is not only are we going to have to look for a lot of housing for seniors in the future, is how do they get to these events? So I was trying to see if you'd have any events like at, in the city hall or at the library because for seniors to get down to your area, when a lot of seniors are mostly over here, do you offer a van to come pick them up or is there anything that's being done? Maybe in Edmunds that maybe you can tell us about, how to make it more amenable to seniors who are having issues walking or don't have a car? Or are there online programs? And a lot of seniors right now maybe not even have a computer. Maybe that's something that we'll move to. But I'm just wondering, how do you connect with the seniors that don't drive?
So, yeah, transportation is always an issue. We have two buses, a 24-passenger and a 15-passenger. Currently, we don't have a program that goes out and picks people up. I mean, you can use Dial-A-Ride. We really encourage people to drive with a friend, you know, so, and we, in Edmunds, are on a bus line. And so there's, people can get there. We're also walking distance for a lot of the folks. But this is something that we talk about, exactly how do we get people? When I was with Boys and Girls Clubs, is how do we get kids from the schools to our clubs? So familiar with sort of how do we get people safely to the centers.
And I appreciate when you say, drive with a friend, but what I'm finding out is especially, you know, there, we've got different levels of seniors who, you know, maybe enjoy the line dancing and that, but you have some that, you know, can't walk or have difficulty walking. And what I'm finding out is the isolation is horrible and a lot of friends have passed on or they're constantly dealing with people passing on. Do you have? And one of the things I've also found that was lacking is Edmunds Hospital was offering grieving classes and it used to be quite a bit and now it's gone very, a lot. You have to wait or you have to do something. Do you offer, I know, Elizabeth, you've explained all of the programs about Medicare and state and estate taxes and different things like that, but is there any grieving or anything like that that you offer seniors to that maybe could just call in on the phone?
We have a social worker on staff, so does counseling, free counseling, and we do offer classes on grieving. We have 70 different programs. I brought a copy of our newsletter for each of you because that's the best way to see exactly what we're offering. And you'll see that we're also promoting the classes that are happening at Mount Lake Terrace, so they're in the newsletter. So I think you'll get an answer to your question by looking at that.
And I have been studying some of the senior programs in the area and looking at how it would fit some of the seniors I know. And what I find is a lot of, there's still maybe more work to be done to look at the different things that maybe I wasn't seeing in the newsletter because I would call up Bothell, I'd call up Elizabeth, I would go to Linwood, I'd look at Edmunds. And I was so surprised Elizabeth and I came down to one thing that maybe this person could use. And to me, it was a little disheartening, and I'm not telling you that because you're doing anything wrong. It's just, there is so many host of different things that seniors need that it's really sometimes hard to find as a family member or a community member of how to educate us so we can help those people that need these services so bad. And it's frustrating. And my frustration isn't at you guys, it's at, you know, what we do for seniors and how it gets done.
There's a lot of need out there, and one thing that we do also is resource and referral. We don't do it all, but there are a lot of phenomenal resources out there. So people will call us and then we'll help them get connected with other resources. We also really pay attention to community needs assessments that are done by the health district, by the, or the health department, by Verdant, and looking at what, what are those unmet needs? We do our own surveys to find out ideas that people have that we're not meeting now, so we try to respond to those. So we're constantly changing and evolving.
And I only have one last question. Steve already alluded to it. And I'm asking these questions because I find this very important and I just don't want to gloss it over and we've asked a lot of questions already, but could you tell us a little bit about your business plan? We, when your former Edmunds mayor came in and did the senior, he brought in this big business plan and what they would do with different things. Can you just, I know you don't have it with you, but can you kind of tell me how you like organize and structure and, you know, how Elizabeth, to ensure that she would get paid? And are you looking at how to bring in income and different things to keep it afloat and to keep it running functionally?
Yes, we believe it can be self-sustaining. And I think that we've even shown in just a few months, being able to secure about $85,000 in funding. There's funding that's available through the county for senior centers. And there's a number of ARPA funding opportunities that will benefit the center here for sure. And interestingly, there's $1.5 million for upgrading HVAC systems. And so there's also $600,000 that will be administered through the Snohomish County, or I guess it's Community Foundation Snohomish County for capacity building. So I can't imagine one of, another senior center has more, that could benefit more from dollars for capacity building, which could mean hiring additional staff, because a lot of our big ideas all take staffing. And so that's the limitations. And luckily, there is a revenue stream that comes in from the rentals, which a lot of the centers don't have. So I think this year it will probably be in the $75,000 range. So we do have a budget that we're building. I will tell you too that Elizabeth will become a staff person for the Edmunds Waterfront Center and will be eligible for health benefits and all the staff training. She's, first week in January, we shut down and we do staff training and Elizabeth will be a part of that. So we're really bringing, bringing them under our wings here.
And the one other thing is, is there a way that we can put this on our agenda every year, at least twice a year, so we could get like a report out and see how they're doing and just something that we're always keeping on top of? And we have, and it gives us to have rapport with you and let the council be able to ask questions to see how things are going.
We would welcome that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Murray, starting on the right end and working our way back.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Daniel, and thank you, Elizabeth, you know, for all of the work that you do. I mean, I will start with saying I know that the Edmunds Waterfront Center does amazing works and puts on amazing programmings and supports your community and our broader, you know, South County community in all sorts of really important ways and very grateful for that work and grateful for the partnership thus far. And Elizabeth, thank you for all the things that you've done for our community, particularly through the pandemic. You know, very, very grateful that you've continued to show up and have made a really big difference in, in people in our community's lives. So let me start there. So had a lot of questions at our work session, which sounds like you listened to. And I guess in taking some time to think through, trying to get at the heart of what my questions were, you know, in preparation for the meeting today, I think where I am coming from is we have a lease proposal before us. And if this was simply like a question where we had a piece of city property where we were looking to lease that to, you know, wonderful nonprofit in our community, I would be fully supportive of that and wouldn't have any further questions. Like, we are not, though, looking at a situation where we have a lease before us at a market rate, where we are saying, this is, this is a city piece of property that we could utilize in other ways that we are choosing not to. We, we have a lease proposal before us that, that brings in revenue of $10 a year to the city. And so there is both the loss of potential city use of that space, the loss of potential different revenue sources in that space. There is the costs, which I still don't quite fully understand as far as what our ongoing costs would be as the city that we would be putting into that space. And I think that's where the complexity lies, is that we have a lease agreement before us. But really what we are saying is that we are, we are providing a lease at a, you know, we are providing a lease because we believe in the work that you are doing and we think that that benefits our community. And I, for me, the question is not, do we support our seniors? I think it's how do we support our seniors? And I think that's where it feels complex because we have a lease that we are committing to five years that I, we have some, some good, I think, general thoughts around what that, that would include, but there's not, I mean, there's not specific deliverables. There's not a way for us as a community, if this relationship and the programming is not meeting the needs of our community, there's not a way out of it. I guess as somebody who spends a lot of time and is currently like trying to redo MOUs for nonprofits who work together for the betterment of those organizations, like good intentions don't always lead to alignment and understanding and outcomes that, that, you know, we plan going in with, with those best intentions. And so I guess for me, it feels like there's kind of two separate pieces here. There's the lease and then there's the programming piece that we are essentially saying, because you are bringing this amazing stuff to our community, we are willing to, to provide a, an agreement that recognizes that. I think there's the agreement that recognizes that. I think the missing piece for me is, what does that mean for our community? What are we getting in exchange for what we are giving? And that is where, for me, there is still not enough clarity, and I love the things you're talking about. You know, and I will say, like, and I will just name because I think this has come up in other conversations for the council, like anytime we look to external organizations to provide services, you know, to our community, we lose the opportunity to, you know, guide those in ways that, you know, like, we try really hard to make sure that we are serving all of our community members and that we're doing that in an equitable way. And, you know, I love that you guys are talking about those things, you know, and like, we are trusting. And you have a long track record, so like, I, I do trust, but I would also love to ensure that I could, when, when a community member says, like, particularly as we, I think, have hard budget conversations in front of us this coming year, like, we are, we are giving up opportunity to bring in revenue. You know, what are we getting in exchange for that? And I feel like that, for me, is where the question marks still stand. And I think it sounds like there's lots of good ideas and I guess I would just love more clarity and/or at least something that makes it clear that maybe we don't have that clarity now, but like, we're going to have that clarity within a certain timeframe. And if we get to a place where we don't have that clarity and/or there is, you know, not an alignment in expectations, that impacts, you know, the lease in a way that, that there is a termination clause there. So I guess those, those are, those are really my concerns. My concerns are not so much the programming. I mean, I have lots of thoughts and interest in the programming, but I think really, I guess the question that I see is, what's before me is, we are looking to provide, you know, city resources in a way that we would be doing so because we are expecting that to benefit our community in a certain way. And I feel like I would love more clarity as well as kind of assurance that if there was at some point, you know, an issue, which I don't anticipate and would hope that that wouldn't be the case, but that there's protection for, for the city and that I'm using our resources wisely when we're making these decisions. So I don't know that I actually have a ton of questions, other than I still would like to understand hard costs as well as perhaps lost opportunity cost. And then again, like, what is the, what is the value of what's being brought into our community by, by, by moving forward with this?
Sure. Thank you for your question.
Yeah.
And actually, I'll just tack on to this real quick, like, what also are sort of the potential, like, capital improvement benefits? Maybe that's a sideboard for Jeff after, after this response, but-
Sure.
Just in the interest of streamline. Thank you.
So the framework of this lease is identical to the leases that I've done with other cities and other organizations. And it's similar, it's, it's the same framework that we have with the City of Edmunds, which was first 55 years and now we have a 55-year lease, you know, extension. So for over 100, so it'll be 110 years. And it's, it's really a zero-cost lease and what the city is offering is the facility or access to, in our case, the land, in exchange for public benefit. Doing something for a population that is a priority for you. And so we're doing those services, providing those services, and you don't have to be responsible for that. And I think most cities choose to contract or to support nonprofits to provide those services. Linwood is an exception. That's, the City of Linwood runs their senior center. The City of Marysville runs their senior center. I know that the City of Everett used to, and I know now it's Volunteer of America, Go Volunteers of America, but for probably 50 years, it was the city and they decided it would be better done by a nonprofit who specializes in that. So in a nutshell, where, in this case, where you own the building, and that was the case in Edmunds for the first 50 years, when the, when there was a problem with the building, the city took care of that. We took care of all the regular maintenance and the repairs and, you know, just sort of keeping the thing going and then providing programs. And the city had access to the building and the city now, in our agreement with the City of Edmunds, they have, they do parks and rec programs in the evenings. And so I just want to assure you or reassure you that this lease is very, this is the basis of all these nonprofit leases. And I know that North Shore also has, I think it's Kenmore, runs the senior center in Kenmore, and it has the same lease, or basically the same idea. They also support the one in Mill Creek, and that's Shore, North Shore, that has a similar kind of lease. So, so what you're getting then is we'll be providing high-end quality responsive services for seniors and for your community. And that's, that's, that's our, our part of the, and then also you would have, in this agreement, you'll see that the city has access for your programming to use it for meetings and that kind of thing. I think it's 100 hours a year, so.
I guess follow-up question to that, since you seem to have a lot of familiarity with, with other communities, kind of leases and agreements. I'm curious if there's programming agreements that partner with those lease agreements?
Typically not. I mean, what, now, the City of Edmunds gives us, has for years, gave us $75,000 for programming and it was general support for our programming, and now it's, it's $50,000 a year, so in addition to making that. So we have, I mean, we can provide our program plans and we can provide, you know, you'll be able to see even in our bylaws that things are laid out of the community that we're committed to serving. And the, we get county dollars and so, and so does the Mount Lake Terrace. With that, it's very explicit on what kind of programs are being offered and we keep track of the individuals that we're serving and the hours and we provide monthly reports to them. So all that information would be made available to you if you were interested in seeing it.
Well, definitely interested in, in seeing it, yes, because again, I think we are, I mean, there's, there's a significant ask before us, right? And I think we have a wonderfully credible organization who is doing great work in Edmunds, and we have an unknown about what that looks like as we move forward into the future here in Mount Lake Terrace, and we're being asked to commit to five years, which is a long time if things, and again, I don't, I don't anticipate that things won't go well. I would hope that that would be a wonderful partnership that could help support our community in both ways that it is currently, as well as lots of new ways, and I would love to support that. I think where my question is, is if there is, at some point, expectations are not being met or, I mean, I have concerns about the fact that your entire board, even the break-off board that is supporting, you know, the work down at Lake Ballinger, you know, are all Edmunds residents, right? If we don't get to a place where there has been an ability- an ability for you to identify and bring in folks from Mount Lake Terrace, and to serve our community in a way that feels adequate for, for our council, or for our community, and therefore us as council, I guess, having to follow up on that, I would love to make sure that there are terms that we can, that, that, that we can perhaps look at, at moving away from that lease, if, if agreement can't be reached, and we can't resolve those issues. And so I guess that, those are where my concerns lie, and it doesn't, I, I don't see that currently. And that's, I mean, that's accurate, right? There's no, ultimately, at the end of the day, what programming you put on at the Ballinger Center after we sign this lease, if we were to move forward with it, would be fully within the purview of your organization, and we don't have any oversight into those programs, and whether or not they are addressing our community's needs in the way that we anticipated going into this, correct?
It's correct that that's not contemplated in this lease, and it wouldn't typically be in that, in, until lease, but that's, but
I guess that's why I asked about the programming agreement, because it feels like perhaps we could have a lease and a programming agreement, and there could be that the lease is dependent on, you know, kind of the, more like annual renewal of a programming agreement, where we have specific expectations laid out, and that we review those on a regular basis.
This has to work for both parties.
Absolutely.
For sure. And we are more than happy to provide for you what you need, so you feel comfortable knowing that we're going to be able to provide services that are important to, you know, your, your community.
Well, I won't speak to any lease causes, lease clauses, sorry. For the reassurances that you wanted, our contract with Department of Human Services for Snohomish County has milestones and things that we have to hit. We have to, I think it's, is it five or seven different categories of kinds of care that we provide? There's health, there's social, there's nutrition, and we have to meet these targets. We have to serve a certain number of individuals every year. So that county contract is kind of covering a lot of that, too. We have to reach that to get the funding, we have to prove that we're insured, and that we've been inspected, and that we're safe, and all those things as well. So hopefully that would give you some reassurance that we're trying to meet those targets all the time, during the pandemic, and that going forward, we're going to keep doing that. And we, it's in our, all our plans, and it's in our contracts, and I hope that helps.
No, I think that, and this is not, I mean, this is, like, trust is there. I think, just as somebody who has to navigate lots of contractual obligations, like, I know the more clarity we can get to upfront, the less likely there is that there is not alignment, and that there's frustration, and, you know, bad feelings later on. I just, I think it's so much easier to have these conversations initially, and make sure that there is clarity and understanding than there is to try to clean it up on the back end. So I feel like there's some work to do here still, from my perspective, but I appreciate the additional information. I'm excited about the work that you do. I appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate you being here, and your willingness to, to share and engage.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any others? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To start with, I know we have Elizabeth, but I, I missed your name.
It's Daniel.
Daniel?
Yeah, Daniel Johnson.
So it sounds like, Daniel, you've had a lot of experience with not only senior centers, but, did you say Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, Boys and Girls Clubs of King County.
Yeah. And I know that's, that program, a long time ago, wasn't, well, I don't know, when I was a little kid, probably, but wasn't going really well, and people like you came in and boosted up that program. So it grew, and it grew, and it grew. So it sounds like if you had that, that kind of background, and you went in with that experience, and the senior center, and the multi-age, which Boys and Girls Club would have, that you would start with getting the revenue and things in line, and adding programs, and it sounds to me like, with your background, that it would be successful. I think, is there, and this might be for Jeff, is there then a clause of, of something that, if the building, if nothing worked, or everybody quit, there are clauses for any of that, like, we'll take over if the building sinks? No, I don't know, but, you know, things like that?
Absolutely. There, there actually is, for catastrophic damage to the building, there's a clause for that. So yeah, addresses any damage that would happen, and, and that potentially that the lease could end at that point, or be suspended. It all depends on the amount of damage that would happen to the facility. If the facility ceased to exist, it'd be hard to operate a program out of there. So definitely, there's that addressed in the lease agreement.
And then, we, we own the building, so anything major, we'd be responsible for repairing. And, and have you taken a look at that, what that would, normal maintenance costs? And, and we can have that, and that be in our budget? That'd work for our budget?
Yes, it's, it's basically what we're budgeting now. So it's the same setup of what we're currently doing, which is, they're already doing the custodial, and we're basically replacing HVAC parts, we're doing major equipment. So air conditioning, we're repairing the roof, when there's a roof leak, which there are many, and working on the siding, major pieces of infrastructure to the facility is what we're responsible for. And then Elizabeth and the Edmond Senior Center then would be in charge of smaller things that happen around the facility, superficial-type things, paint, and things like that, that they would be responsible for. But the city does pitch in. From time to time, we have facility staff that do come around and try to troubleshoot items for them, and that's just something that our staff have done, to make sure things are going well, and replacing fixtures, things like that. Plumbing, plumbing is one of our responsibilities, too.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Payne Donovan, and then the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'll try to be brief here. I think, to, to piggyback on, on the sort of infrastructure, capital, capital issues sort of theme, you know, I think, you know, we've, we've talked a little bit, Daniel, about, you know, the opportunity to go seek out grants for, for the structure. I think the question to you, Jeff, is, sort of, what's the, what's the ballpark on sort of the liability, you know, if we are able to come to agreement and partner here? What sort of costs to the city are we mitigating, you know, in this, say, five-to-10-year period that we're, we're kind of talking about tonight? And then, on top of that, I think, you know, to, I just want to jump on the bandwagon in terms of board representation. I do, I do think that's an important sort of concept that Councilmember Murray's raised. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
So I'm going to speak from the top of my head, which might not be 100% accurate, on all facility issues down there, but we are undertaking a study right now to do a full assessment of each one of the facilities within the city, and the clubhouse is one of them. Right now, we are absolutely sure that there needs to be work done to the HVAC units. So they are in the roof, which means we have to have a crane pull them upward through the roof, which is going to destroy the roof itself. We do know the roof is past its useful life as well. And so those are the two largest, most expensive components to any house or facility, and so both of those are things that need to be replaced. And we have budgeted, in this current budget cycle, some dollars to address that. And so whether or not it's enough money, or it's any of those things, we're trying to figure out right now, to get an actual, actual assessment of that dollar amount. And, and those, the design for those facilities, that's 33 years old now. So there are more modern systems that don't utilize, you know, the actual setup the way that we have right now, with those external condenser units on that, on that east side. So we will take a look at that and try to get an assessment, but I think that we have $700,000 budgeted for that endeavor. So there are many other issues. As you know, the building's sitting on Pete, and that whole site is. It is actually on pilings, though, so the facility, the building itself is secure. It's just concrete pathways around it are all sinking. The deck is on actual, it's on, we have the support system that we can ratchet up and down for the rear patio, and I believe it's fully ratcheted as high as it will go. So it's another piece that we'll have to address, and some of the, some of the other ancillary items on there. The cedar siding is in need of repair, and so there's different items like that. I would say probably the entire CIP for the building is in the couple of million range, but I'm guessing right now without that report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. I see the mayor has some questions as well. We'll turn it over to the mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. So I have a few questions, and I don't know if this was mentioned before, but I'm worried about the identity of Mount Lake Terrace with this takeover, or joint partnership. What is the center going to be called?
The Lake Ballinger Center?
It's going to be called the Ballinger Center?
Isn't it the Lake Ballinger Center?
Lake Ballinger Center. Okay, will there, so will there be any Mount Lake Terrace in there at all?
We're still
I know it's in the address, but.
Our 501(c)(3), and we consider ourselves the entity that runs in Lake Ballinger Center is and remains the Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group. So that is our official name. We have a DBA as Lake Ballinger Center. Part of it was a little bit, we, we don't get as many pool calls, calls for pool hours anymore, and it differentiates us. I think it highlights where we are, and I just hope that we're going to be, you know, a new beautiful feature in that park, as it's expanding and developing and becoming, not expanding, but real wildlife resource for the area. Just wanted to speak to one other thing really quickly. I think that the reason why I reached out to Edmonds, and some of our former board members did, and things too, is I saw it as the lifeline we needed to keep going at that point. We were so small that, as I said, if I hadn't kept working, we wouldn't be there right now. This gives us a much deeper pool of resources. The board members that I've been working with are very dedicated to the center. Some of them are there almost all the time. And we have people from our ham radio group who do a lot of our emergency planning things in the field days and things in that group, and the intent is to bring on some of our Mount Lake Terrace residents. It was just a matter of urgency and need, so we could remain in compliance, so that we could get this funding from the county for this annum, and, and keep moving forward. So I think what I've enjoyed is, not only Daniel, but all the executive directors and directors of the Snohomish County Senior Centers. We network together, we share ideas. Everyone's been incredibly supportive, and there's a big net to catch us, I think. So it's the big thing I'd like to say. It's just, we, the identity of Mount Lake Terrace and that place is very important to me. And we've talked often about keeping our culture and our vibe, and being there for the people. And we won't be just a duplicate. We're going to be our own place. We have kind of our own, our own feel, and we want to keep that going, and we're trying to reach out more and more, now that we can get out into the community, and our schools, and with some of the other commissions.
Thank you. So you mentioned the other senior centers in other cities. Do we know if any of the other cities' senior centers, if they're, if they're owned by the city, and what they charge for rent?
The ones that I'm aware of are Linwood, and so that's a city-owned building, and it's a city program. So the staff work for the city, and so there's no, there's no lease, because it's, it's their program. I know Rose Hill is also a city-owned building and city program in Muckelteo. And in Marysville, I know that that's a city-owned building, and the staff work for the city. So in those cases, there's no lease. And I don't know what the situation is in Everett.
Yeah, we're looking at me on that one, for folks who are wondering. So I know it's a city-owned building. I know that the charge is we need to be self-sustaining in a handful of years, but I don't remember what the actual rent is. So if we really needed that, that wouldn't be hard to find. I just can't ask that question from the dais right now, but I can get that answer if we need it.
I'm, I'm not aware of any lease that, where there's, it's more than a $10 a year kind of situation. We have a lease for our thrift store, but it's a commercial lease and commercial space, and it's not a city, and so we pay a commercial rate for that. But we're also not seen as providing, you know, the exchange of providing community benefit. So that's, that's a difference.
Okay, so, I'm, the only thing that I'm worried about is that, as time goes on, it becomes more and more of an Edmonds center. And so I would really like to see how you're going to be attracting more Mount Lake Terrace residents to join, and to have more Mount Lake Terrace residents on the board. I know that, that this is really a tough time, and we, COVID didn't do anybody a favor. And I know that Elizabeth was, has worked really, really hard, and her one and a half staff, for, for these past several years. But again, I'm looking at the future, and I really want to keep this identity as a Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center. And, and, you know, it could start that way, and I'm just wondering, do we have anything in, in the agreement or the lease? Leasing is the property, but do we have any agreements that will try to keep more and more Mount Lake Terrace-centric things going on, like board members, members? And I know that at one time, just to help out the senior center, because they said, anybody can join, so I joined. I paid my monthly, my yearly dues on that, and, you know, and the rest, the rest of the council can, can continue to do that, if, you know, so that we have our names in there as, as members. And I, and I, you know, I did go to the lunches in the past, but that's way in the distant past now. So more, more communication with the council, more communication with the city, keep inviting us to things. I know that there was a luau there at one time. Just keep, keep the council and, and the city staff aware of what's going on, and just keep inviting us. Even if we don't show up, just keep inviting us. Because I, my main, I like the idea of everything, but I really want to keep this as something that the Mount Lake Terrace residents are going to be owning.
And we, we, we share that commitment to maintaining that identity with Mount Lake Terrace. And so we should keep that conversation going, and we want the community feel ownership of that. We have, over a two-year period, we went from, in Edmonds, from 1,100 members to 4,000 members, 4,010 members. And 76 of those members live in Mount Lake Terrace. And we have a reciprocal membership agreement. So basically, if you're a member of one, you're a member of the other, and you can go, so if there's services that are not offered in Mount Lake Terrace because of space, and it's offered in Edmonds, you can go, go there. So I think that this is going to be a great lift for both, or both cities. And I know that there's great interest in Edmonds to do more with the city of Mount Lake Terrace, and I know that there was the recent commitment of funding to help support the park project as, as one example. I mean, we feel connected already.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor, any other final questions?
Thank you.
All right. Sounds like we're good there. I have a quick question. When did the Mount Lake Terrace Community Center turn into the Lake Ballinger Center?
Exactly.
It wasn't, it was, it's been the Mount Lake Terrace Community Center, correct?
At the official name? The official name is still Mount Lake Terrace Seniors Group. It had been called the Mount Lake Terrace Community Senior Center. And A, that was a mouthful. And, but we did have some confusion between us and the recreation pavilion often. And it created a little bit of a barrier that people who thought that they didn't live in Mount Lake Terrace couldn't come there. But the name changed last year. We were just trying to reinvigorate the place. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from it. And it's, it's a DBA on our business license and our charity renewals with the Secretary of State. So we, but we still have our other name as well.
I see. Thank you. All right. So any other questions? Everybody's hopefully had a chance. I'd like to count some ever Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. But real quick and just to clarify, the rent that we were formally charging was how much a month?
1,500.
That's what I thought, 1,500. So theoretically speaking, if we were charging you rent, I'm going to go out on a limb and say we'd probably be about 1,500 again, more or less? Or will we be thinking it would be a lot more? Just kind of want to put it in context, that's all. That's really my asking, not trying to lock anybody into a trap. So we're not, we wouldn't be asking for $3 million, right? We'd be probably asking the same amount if we, versus the $10 a year. That's what I'm trying to get at, right?
Yes.
So if it's $1,500 a month, that's our actual that we are giving up, 1,490, 1,490. More than that, obviously, because it's only $10 a month. Somebody would do that math.
18,000.
Because a little less than a dollar. So 15, it'd be 1,499 about that you'd be giving up a month. So as I was listening here, first and foremost, let me back up and say thank you both for a wonderful presentation. You've given us a lot of details that we didn't have. You've answered all of my general questions. I mean, there's a lot of the details, but nonetheless, a lot that's there. So I do want to go back because residents sometimes only get one recount and it's from the paper and it's whatever they give. So I want to make sure at least if they watched the recording, they hear what I heard, which again, let's go with, I'd forget the $10 a month and say we've given up the 15 totally a month every month. But what I thought I heard we were getting in return, or perhaps as an investment, is an executive director with a salary who currently doesn't have a salary, or at least has been doing that work without. Is that fair to say? So there'd be a salary? Okay, so there's a salary that's not currently there. More importantly, because money is important, but what I actually heard was community. You heard you say will be a part of our community, will be invited down, there's trainings or the whole bunch. And I just will say, although that's one person, that one person can do a whole lot. So you've been doing all this with whatever you have right now, and I can only imagine what you'll be doing with community and training. So just putting that in the motion, that that's not going to be of something I can add up. I also heard you're already doing, but will continue to do, I'm going to keep it simple, cross-promotion, meaning that whatever's coming out in your Edmunds Center for the, excuse me, wrong place, waterfront center, there's Mount Lake Terrace advertising. I happen to know for sure that is not cheap. So there's a cost that we're not factoring in, but money is associated. Now, all this is going towards that 1,499 or 1,500 a month that we're giving up. Again, this is just me recounting for anybody who watches the video later. I've loved the conversation. I heard everything. I just want to be clear that from where I'm sitting, we're just talking about rent. We couldn't possibly be talking about the CIP because we're on the hook for that no matter what. That's why I wanted to be clear. We're not going to ask for $3 million in rent, and we've covered the CIP. No matter what rent we get, it isn't going to be a bit of a drop into that huge bucket. So rent is not the savior here. Just saying that out loud for folks while they're asking me, why are you bringing this up? Because what I did hear that is a savior was self-sustaining model. I've heard that clear. I also know how hard that is. So I think about all the in-kind services that have to be, we're going to call expertise, donated to make that come to fruition. Now, in that, which I just want to make sure I heard you say, because I agree, we better have Mount Lake Terrace people on the board. But what I actually heard was we had a very short timeline before we lost $35,000. So really, we should be saying thank you for putting whoever it was's feet to the fire to join the board, as many boards as I'm on. And that means that your whole personal livelihood is now on the hook. And whatever happens, you're on the hook. And it's just a whole lot that goes with that. So whoever those eight people were that said, yes, I'm going to risk putting my name down on a city I'm not in, thank you. Especially because it had an immediate, I got money for it, that would have easily been diverted in a different direction, which I'm pretty sure 15 times 12 is more than whatever you saved. So there was that for me to be thinking, oh, this is for my residents who are listening and checking back in. I did hear, which will sound minor until you realize how much rental hours cost, that we're actually as a city getting more access to that beautiful space, which, whatever those hours are, I've seen how much it costs to rent spaces. It's not cheap, which is why I always try to find things that are free, but it's not easy to do. And then that last one, I'm just going to tease myself. And if anybody else feels attacked, what a coincidence, which is to say that idea of public, and let me make sure I see it because I might have glasses, public benefit, as you called it. I just want to say that I've been on the council almost five years as of this month, and this is the most I've ever heard us talk about seniors, which is my way of saying, wow, if we had this much fervor five years ago, I wonder where we would be. But through the pandemic, we had a lot of other stuff to focus on. But we've been on the other side of the pandemic, and this is the first time I've talked about seniors, when it's talking about rent and should be or should be not. And I keep thinking to myself, huh, that's interesting. What would that look like if this city figured out what can we do for our seniors? So I would say what you've done here for me today is for me to make sure that I start thinking about those more consistently, because I realize I have never spent an hour talking about our seniors, and I wouldn't be here without a senior. Because they weren't a senior at the time, but they are now, right? But I just think that's really telling, and I hope that as a council, I know me personally takeaway is, I don't make sure that as we're having these conversations, I am doing this. Because for the record, that idea about the seniors who are being isolated and their voice, and they don't speak English, I've known about that for three years. Because it was a person who came to do some work at my house. He brought it up, and I didn't know what to do with it because it's not our area. So I didn't know I could come down and tell you, you could do that. I encouraged them to do that. But I didn't know that as a dais, I could do that. And that's not your problem, that was mine. But as I'm listening to us talk, and I hear the excitement and the concern we have for our seniors losing their identity and making sure they have a space and all that, I'm like, well, let's make sure that we continue that, not just when we're talking about, should you pay me more than $10, which is apparently the industry standard right now. The answer to the question about VOA is an internet answer, so you could actually look that up for anybody who's interested. I don't try to use the internet when I'm in here because of the rules and all that. But nonetheless, if you needed another example of a city trying to do that, which is just to say VOA's responsibility at the end of the day is to be a self-sustained program inside a city facility. They're not going to sell us that building, but they don't expect to keep paying for it either, which is the kind of crossroad we were at because of where we picked up. And I do think that the city of Everett would say that they actually moved over to nonprofit just to answer and support your point. Because at the end of the day, when the city starts losing budgets, who do you think they start pulling funds from? Because they're responsible for the whole county, and that was not a good space to be in, which is why they were very sad to have to pass this over to us, but recognized for the common public benefit, it was time to start working with the group and figure out what's going to work. So a lot of words there, but I just again want to say thank you. You've inspired me to again, to think about doing this job differently. And I appreciate my colleagues here, including my mayor, with the wonderful insights, because I still have to go home and think about those. And it's the first time I realized really why cool it is that we're a seven-headed beast because we all come at this differently. But I promise you, we all agree with everything we've heard today, even if we don't necessarily appear to be supporting each other as we're explaining our own positions. But we are. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Okay, so we are being asked to authorize the city manager to sign the lease agreement between the city and Edmunds Waterfront Center. I think there are some that are not quite prepared to do that tonight. I suppose we should at least put a motion on the table. So yes, Councilmember Sonmore.
Mayor Protem, can I interject for one moment?
Please.
Just wanted to note that there is an error in the lease. On the first note under term, it says ends midnight, December 31st, 2033. That would be if there was an extension. So that should read December 31st, 2028, since it's a five-year agreement with the option of one five-year extension. So just wanted to note that at this time.
Great, just in case. Thank you. All right. Sounds like we might have a motion to consider and debate. Councilmember Sonmore. Or not.
Well, I, I can put it out there. I don't know if that's what everybody wants at this time. So if anybody wants to say something else, I don't have to put the motion on the table. There's, you had mentioned another concern, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm respecting that.
All right.
I'll, I'll leave it.
Let's, so it sounds like before we put a motion on the table, we have a city manager maybe has some ideas for direction of how we can resolve this issue tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think based on what I've heard, that we have a couple of things that we need to talk about with the waterfront center. This lease does roll over, as I understand it, on a month-to-month basis until we can have those issues worked out the current agreement to operate. So we can have those discussions with the waterfront center over the next several weeks and place this on a future agenda, not for a full discussion like we've had tonight, but after we've resolved those, those concerns and get to what we think you are looking for. And I think we've, we've heard that from several members pretty clearly.
Okay, yes, make sure that we have been clear and have given the direction to the city manager for where we're going and what he, what we expect him to come back with. Any further discussion, ideas? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Was there a timeline on this? I think, did you, Jeff, did you say something about a lease or something's up at December 35th or 1st? So is that, this our last meeting for the month?
Yes, that's correct.
So is there a time consideration?
There, there is a holdover portion on the agreement that allows for it to, for them to remain in the facility while the lease has expired. So the lease will have ended, but they will be able to, to be able to stay in the facility and still will be obligated to pay the rent amount until it gets resolved.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I guess question maybe for the city manager. I mean, so part of what's before us is the, you know, forgiveness of kind of the back rent is what, I mean, is that something we can address in a standalone way tonight? So we're not continuing to add stress of, I mean, we're talking about a $10 a year agreement, but we're going to charge our Mount Lake Terrace seniors directly significantly more and create more stress for them as an organization? That doesn't seem, it seems like that could be something we could resolve pretty quickly.
It could be, but with the holdover provision in the agreement, it would just, you would have to do it again.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah.
Well, I guess, can I, I would just say that, like, I don't, for me, that isn't a question. So I guess if that is creating additional stress, and I, at least for me, that is not that, I don't have any question about that piece of what's before us.
Very good. Any other comments? Sounds like, and you feel we'd be able to put, take, take our discussion tonight and address those concerns, issues, things we'd like to get more information on between now and the next, our next regular meeting, so in January, and be able to bring that back before us?
Yeah, so your next regular meeting is January 4th, so probably not by that one. But January 18th, I think, is certainly doable. So to summarize, and Jeff and the folks at the table, correct me if I'm wrong, two major concerns. One is the identity of the center, which could potentially be resolved by Mount Lake Terrace residents on the board. And the second concern is the initial lease term. Is that a fair summary?
I think that covers most of it, but I heard one other thing that maybe Councilmember Murray is going to bring up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I guess, because I want to make sure I'm clear. I actually don't, the lease term itself is not the concern for me. I think the, the concern for me is the five-year commitment because we are doing so at, with the agreement terms that we are, right? And so I'm concerned about the programming piece and making sure that we are building towards, you know, meeting our community's expectations based on the, what we are giving, right? And so I think it is, how, how do we get more clarity around what we are getting in a way that perhaps has options to terminate the lease if it is for some reason, which again, is not my anticipation, but if there was, there was, it was not going the way we anticipated. So I guess, is that, is that helpful?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right. Councilmember Ryan.
If I could ask Elizabeth, you mentioned earlier that you already to receive some money, is it through the county, that you have some guidelines? And you said there are five or seven of them that you have to meet?
We, we are a contracted senior center with the Human Services Division of Department of Health for Snohomish County. And they, we just went through, signed a contract and sent it off yesterday again. They, they have a lot of checkpoints. They want to make sure that when they're providing money for us to provide these services, that they're getting what they want to. So it's kind of, it isn't directly to the city of Mount Lake Terrace, but we are held accountable for those kinds of things. They have certain target areas, and you don't have to provide every service on the target area, but you have to hit those five or seven, I just don't recall the number right now, to make sure that you're broad and everything. You can't just be a card group or something like that for social. You need to be able to provide these other services to qualify for that. So we're required to serve at least 500 people, unduplicated people per year. And I think we had 6,000 visits last year. So, and that was still coming out of the pandemic. So I see everything on an upward trajectory for us. But did I answer that? I'm sorry. Did I answer all your questions?
Yes. Then, given that with counsel consideration and with our city manager and assistant city manager, we could use that also as a guideline. Take a look at it. If we could get the list and use that as the part of being, what's the term?
Programming.
Not compatible. I'm losing, I'm getting hot up here. I don't know what temperature it is in here. But we could take a look at that list and use that as our, you're keeping up your end of the bargain with us. And I think that, that could solve all that, a lot of that problem right there, that could do it right there.
Yeah, I would be happy for that. I was going to say that I'm, any of you may just stop down at any time. I'll explain everything, probably with too many words, but, or any questions you want to answer. But yes, we would be happy to like duplicate something like that.
Yeah, if you could take that list and send it via email to Jeff and our city manager, they could take a look at that and see if that's something that would give us the accountability. That's the term I'm looking for.
Right.
You're being accountable for what you're doing. And we could use that as a, as a guideline, since it's with the Department of Health. And I, I kind of trust them a little sometimes. All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any final thoughts to share before we move on? It looks like we've given direction, everybody, oh, Councilmember Woodard.
I'm, I, so we're going to kick this can down the road, and I want to be able to understand why I just kicked. Because I heard we have concerns about board representation, which again, I, I, it landed on me as an immediacy thing of we needed to have people get on boards, we don't lose this funding, not a coup or some planned, we don't want to hear you. We literally didn't have Mount Lake Terrace, I'm presuming, Mount Lake Terrace people who willingly said, I'll put my livelihood on the line while you sort this out. Just call it what it is.
We, I do have some of our ADVID members who are willing to step up to the board. Yes, it was an expediency thing we needed.
So is that what we're going to hear when you bring it back, what she just said right now?
I think there's a couple of different options there, and I'm thinking on my feet. So if I miss a couple, then.
And again, I'm not trying to walk anybody into a trap. I just want to make sure that.
No.
I'm just going to hear what you just said in a month, whenever we come back.
Yeah, we didn't have the chance to do an appeal to the community and ask people to nominate.
But again, I'm just looking at it from the, why am I charging my city manager and staff to bring back answers I'm hearing right now? So that's the first one I just heard, that the path towards Mount Lake Terrace board residents, board members is there. It just, again, as I heard it, it wasn't something you, whatever reason, could do. And I tie it back to deadlines. The county is not trying to hear, oh, you missed.
it back to deadlines. The county is not trying to hear, "Oh, you missed me by an hour. I had to submit something by four o'clock today, or it was dead in the water." And they got it to me at 3:55. Thank goodness for email, right? They weren't trying to hear that, what you had to deal with. But I heard that was one of the concerns. The second one, I think, is where I'm really having a hard time, and I want to separate myself out. When you listen to the recording, you'll hear me say I had concerns about the length of the lease, five years. Mine was solely economic-based. If this thing turned around, as we're trying to build down there and starts making money hand over fist, and I was teased a little bit about that idea, but I took it. Nonetheless, if it does that, because that is our vision to activate that space, which again, I pointed out, we got a whole bunch of new residents that will be here within five years, who will learn about a lake that they can walk to, they can cruise down to, quite frankly. But again, that wasn't the issue. The point of it was, if that started making hand over fist money, where's that money going? And I accused your staff or your board of perhaps having to pay other bills. So why wouldn't they look at their entire portfolio, of which we were one? You answered that in the opening sentences, that that will not happen. That money stays here. So that was one of the concerns of this lease time. But I'm hearing the way we're talking now, I feel like, wait a minute, did we move into the senior citizen business? Because by our definition of what we're going to ask you to do as a nonprofit, we didn't do that of you, or you wouldn't have gotten loan forgiveness, or whatever it is we called it, rent forgiveness. We didn't have that threshold, I guess is what I'm saying. And I would question whether or not, no, don't take it the wrong way, but you've been serving our seniors to the levels that we expect. And I stand here again, saying for five years, I know I've not asked that question, and I held on to one for three years that I wanted to ask you, and I'm now realizing I could have said something about that, but I didn't realize we were in that business, which I'm now hearing either we're fully moving into, because that's the answer you need to bring back, which Councilmember Ryan just pointed out. The county already answers that for us before they give us their money. They have a whole bunch of standards that you have to meet. And I guess that's my way of saying, are we going to then create our own standards? Because if not, I'm not saying use it as a proxy. I'm saying you don't get your money as a senior citizen, as a senior center, then we're not funding a senior center. So it's like, it seems like it's a self, you know, self-regulating situation, unless we as a council, again, are going to, which I'm open to. We just got into the tree canopy business, for the record, everybody who's listening, and we are coming for you residents. And I'm one of those residents, has work on the morning, work on my tree in the morning, for the record. That's pointed out, though. Again, if that's the, you got to bring back in a month's time, what's, are we going to hear that's going to answer that question, other than our own set of guidelines for how we know what's successful? And again, I beg the question, are we in the senior center business? Because I didn't know that. I'm kicking myself for three years' time if we are. And I didn't hear a third concern, so if there was, I'll come at that one, too. But again, I want to kick a can down the road to hear what I heard tonight, because we didn't hear it packaged the way we wanted. But we're hearing it, and you're not going to come back with anything different.
So first thing, as far as the, the lease term goes, there could be performance metrics associated with that, that we can add in. As far as people on the, sitting on the board of the senior center, that could be a time, you know, within, and I'm just talking, right? But within two years' time, majority of the board, or supermajority of the board, are made up of residents of Mount Lake Terrace. So we recognize that it had to happen immediately, or the center would lose county funding. But we want a plan and a timeframe in order to make that a majority of Mount Lake Terrace residents. For the lease term, I heard some discussion tonight about a programming agreement. I think that would be incredibly difficult to produce, because needs change over time, and we need to be flexible and agile in order to address those needs. But there are some broad parameters, and I think using something that a government, a funding partner for the center already uses as a starting point would be a good idea. But we have to look at those. I don't even know what those are right now.
So I will come at this differently. If I make a motion to vote now, we would just wait and see if anybody seconds it. Is that fair to say? Okay, so then, rather than, did we already make a motion to table?
No, motion's been put on the table yet.
Thank you. Then I would like to make, and correct me if I get this wrong, because, sorry, this is Mayor Protam's job. We always rely on you, so coach me through this. I would like to make a motion to vote on the lease agreement for the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse. Maybe that was that straightforward?
With the addendum of the agreement.
With the addendum of the agreements.
Let me, please.
Let me suggest, you, did I hear that you are, you are moving to authorize the city manager to sign the attached lease agreement between the city and Edmonds Waterfront Center? Yeah. So, yes. I moved to authorize the city manager to sign the attached lease agreement between the city of, city and Edmonds Waterfront Center. Do I say with the amendment, the amendments that?
As amended.
As amended.
For the initial time, time period through 2028.
For the initial time period through 2028.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion that's on the table? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Woodard, you putting it on the table for discussion. I, we'll go back to, I mean, contracts matter, words matter. I think intentions are good. I think the things that we have heard tonight are positive and, you know, would be enriching to our community. And if we don't get those in writing, we don't have any recourse if that's not what happens. I don't think the current lease before us protects us in the way that we should be protected. Essentially, we are giving them a lease for $10 a year. If they go a totally different route, if they decide, I mean, we don't have a lot of recourse. There is very, very high-level, like, here's what we would like to, you know, accomplish with this space. It is not very specific, and there's no out if we don't like what they do for the next five years. That is where my concern lies, and I do think that we would benefit as a community to dig in a little bit more, get a little bit more specific, and hopefully avoid challenges in the future where, again, because we didn't spell it out upfront, we are creating hardship and issues and bad feelings that I think we could just get clarity on right up front. So that is where I'm at. I will not support voting for this tonight. I will vote no.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any further discussion? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I was also a little concerned that there's no escape clause, I guess, mine for this. But then, something that got me thinking, and is Councilmember Woodard's question, are we in the senior center business as a city? I know it's our building and that, but I'd like to see this successful. And I'm thinking now that it's a go for me, and I think we have more than qualified people here that have good intentions, and I'd like to see that go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Sonmore?
I was going to make the original motion to vote yes at the beginning, but I want to be fair to our council members on here now and respect what they're saying. And if we just have to go a couple more weeks to find this out, then I'd have to vote no. And that's where I'm at right now, is we have seen it go south before, and I don't anticipate that. I'm, I'm very glad what I'm hearing. And Daniel, you have tons of experience. You've been very patient and answered all our questions, and it's been very impressive. But just out of the respect for the question and being a team member, I just would like to have those questions answered. So I don't, I don't see any big struggles in the future or anything, but, you know, Erin keeps, Councilmember, keeps on talking about some experience, and she's very passionate about getting some answers to it. And so I want to make sure she gets those questions answered. So that, for that fact, I would vote no. But I'm in favor of going forward with this.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So I think for me, I would have to ask, we heard a threshold that has to be passed. Can we achieve that threshold, which I think the threshold was we want that in writing, of what we have been hearing in writing? So for me, it would come down to, when we come back to this conversation, will it be in writing, which is the threshold? Because if it isn't, then you won't meet the threshold, and we'll be still stuck in, well, what's the next threshold? So let's start with, can you meet that threshold? Because if you can, I will back down, or I will pull this off the table, and you just wait a couple more weeks, and we'll do this again. But I'm, I'm all about leaps of faith. That's why I work for a church. But nonetheless, I want to recognize that this is not a church, and everything is, as you pointed out, contractual, especially in this world, and litigious on the back end of that. So if we can get it in writing, then I will pull that.
And at this point, I don't know. That would be a negotiation that we would have to work out, if we can get language that's acceptable to both parties.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. May come back to you, it looks like. But we'll start with, actually, Councilmember Murray, and then the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I was just going to respond briefly to Councilmember Sonmore. So I appreciate you giving me a quick chance to do that. I mean, here's, if I am the only one with these concerns, I mean, please, like, I don't need, I mean, if no one else sees the same things I do, like, I support, we all get to see things differently. Like, that is my perspective. I think there would be value. And like, if folks are ready to move forward and vote yes, like, that is your prerogative, and like, that is, that is why we each have a vote. So I guess I will just say that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Council, Mayor Metzger, right?
Okay, so I, I really do want that extra time. And if I vote no, I don't want people to think that I'm against the seniors or the senior whatever. I, there are certain things that I want to see, and I want to talk to city manager, and, and I just need to mull over a couple of things. And so I'm just not ready tonight to vote the way that I really want to.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Woodard?
I would like to move to, I don't know how to take off my motion.
Withdraw.
Withdraw, thank you. I would like to withdraw my motion to move forward.
All right, there's a second degree. Second agrees?
I think it was reflection.
You want me, yeah. Second.
Okay, the second, the motion to withdraw and the second, have, have agreed to withdraw the motion, let's put it that way. So we no longer have a motion on the table. And we will now have direction to the city manager to come back and work with Edmonds Waterfront Center and the senior, with, and the Mount Lake Terrace seniors to bring back some additional information for our consideration at the 18th, January 18th meeting.
We will target the January 18th meeting, and we'll firm that up as we get closer.
Very good. Is everybody comfortable with that? You guys, very good. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the time and information and the valuable insight into where we're at with our seniors and taking care of our seniors moving forward. We do look forward to working with everybody and putting this agreement in place. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are now going back to consideration of, it's like the lease, the Comcast franchise agreement.
Astound should be first.
I'm sorry, Astound, yep. Sorry, don't have my eyes on yet. All right, so with that, we are now moving into the review of the Astound franchise agreement ordinance, and that'll be city manager Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are looking at a new franchise agreement with Astound Broadband LLC. The initial agreement was adopted in August of 2013, and you heard this at your December 7th council meeting as a public hearing. And we require, we would recommend that you adopt the ordinance as presented.
Very good. Thank you, city manager. Do we have any questions of the city manager before we consider this ordinance agreement? Everybody comfortable moving forward? In that case, do I have a motion for, to consider? Is this a public hearing?
Oops, did I just click on the, no, I clicked on the right one. It said recommended motions, move to open public hearing. Am I on the wrong one? Sorry, got to get these.
I need the bigger one.
Sorry, I saw in the memo there that we still had it advancing to the 21st meeting. But on the, on the bill, we would just recommend that you adopt the franchise agreement with Astound Broadband LLC as presented.
Yeah, so in other words, that was.
It's just the old one?
Yeah, this is the old one. We just needed to update the bill before us. All right. So did everybody understand that motion that, that we are adopting? So we are, we are adopting the agreement with the Astound franchise. Is that?
Astound Broadband LLC.
All right.
And we'll update our.
And who was our, who made that motion?
Erin.
Sure, I made the, so moved.
Councilmember Murray makes the motion, and the second is Councilmember Woodard.
Okay, very good. We have a motion on the table to adopt the agreement with the Astound broadband franchise. And a second, do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have adopted the agreement. All right. In that case, we're ready to move on to Comcast.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, mayor, members of council. This is a new franchise agreement with Comcast. The original agreement was in 2004, was initiated in 2004, and council did hear this item at your regular meeting on December 7th in a public hearing. This one is slightly different. There is two small changes from what you saw on December 7th, neither one of which is substantial. Comcast has requested that they change their name from, as part of the agreement, from Comcast Cable Communications LLC to Comcast Cable Communication, easy for me to say, Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. So that's one small change there. The second change is changing the date of Comcast's acceptance of this agreement to the year 2024. So this would, by the time it gets to them, they execute it, send it back, it would be January. And those are the only two small changes. And this one looks to have the same issue as the last one we voted on. So a recommended motion would be moved to adopt the franchise agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC as presented.
All right. With that cleared up.
So moved.
Do we have, we have a motion to adopt the agreement?
Second.
With Comcast? And a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the agreement, adopting the agreement with the Comcast franchise LLC, management family thing?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
With the changes.
Yes.
Very good. And all, and any opposed? No, we have a, adopted that motion as well, so we are ready to move on. Thank you very much. We now have the city managers report. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, mayor, members of council. A couple things to mention tonight. Our new utility billing software, Invoice Cloud, went live on Monday. We've had some great signups, a few hiccups that I wanted to make you aware of. The Invoice Cloud system is apparently pulling historical property records, which we are fixing, and it is syncing up over time. But if you purchased your home in the last 10 years, you might get a bill in the name of the former owner. That will be fixed by next week. It's, it's syncing up with the property record system and our old system. But so far, everything else is working perfectly. We haven't had any issues that I'm aware of. And once that gets, the property records issue gets worked out, it'll be fantastic. It's looking like it's going to be a really great system for us long-term. We did have a legislative tour yesterday with members of our delegation. I thought it went extremely well, and it really helped that the sun was out, amazingly enough. But that went really well to talk about our town center plans. And holiday closures, I wanted to mention. So tomorrow, City Hall will be closing a little bit early at 3 o'clock, and then will be closed on Monday for Christmas Day and Monday, January 1st for New Year's Day. I also brought all of the work programs that. I also brought all of the work programs that, and I'm just scaring you at these, but all of the work programs that each of our departments put together to accomplish your goals in 2024. I'm not going to share any of those with you due to the late hour, and I want to make sure that all of you have plenty of time to share your liaison reports. But I do have these here, and if you have any questions about what we're doing in order to accomplish your goals in '24, they're all answered here. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. Perhaps you can email that document to all of us. That'd be great. Any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, city manager. Are we going to resend bills in the correct name that went out with the wrong names?
Bill, oh, yeah.
For the utility billing?
Yeah, the, the actual bills didn't go out. It's when you go into sign in and create your account. That's where the problem lies, but that's, that's going to get fixed.
Okay, great. And then I just had a quick, not something you reported on, but since it's the shortest day of the year and I was driving by Evergreen earlier and it was dark at 5 o'clock when I, I went by, I guess I would just, that was something I'd asked about before. I don't, I don't know if we've given any consideration to, to extending lights when it's not reserved, but again, I think, given that that is, you know, one of our few all-weather fields in the community this time of year when it's so dark and there's limited options, and especially because we have had such a nice winter in terms of weather, I would love to at least understand if that's an option to extend those lights.
And I can get that answer for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any other questions of the city manager? Seeing none, we are ready to move into the council liaison reports, and I'm going to start on my right. Councilmember Murray?
All right, I got to be prepared now. So the 14th, we had our work session. Last night, we had our monthly DEI commission meeting. We had all sorts of amazing conversation, I guess, highlights. Oh, I had it pulled up and then maybe I closed it. That's what happens when it gets this late. Okay. They started to have conversations about some of our upcoming proclamations for January and February, so they are working on, again, thinking about ways to connect in with different community groups. We hosted Sally Guzman, I think is her name, from the Edmonds School District, who shared a lot of the work that they are doing with, around diversity, equity, and inclusion in particular. So the commission is doing a really good job of connecting with other groups in the community. They have been meeting with some of our other, they met with some of our other DEI commissions from our neighboring cities. They're going to start doing that on a quarterly basis. So they are really looking at ways to, you know, not only do the work that we are doing within our community, but to partner, you know, to both provide other opportunities for those in our community as well as to invite folks from neighboring communities into our community. So they are actively working through the strategic planning process. I think Carolyn will probably give us an update on that soon, but they have their strategic, we, we have our strategic planning folks identified, and so they will be spending some time with council in the new year. So again, I think that's something we'll hear more about, but they will be scheduling time with each of us to ensure that we have opportunity to, to share and weigh in. So they're doing good work, and so they had a little, had a nice meal before their, before the meeting, and, yeah, I think those are the, the important things to note. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Woodard?
Okay, mostly events. So on the 9th, I had the honor, Saturday, of heading up to the county council's chamber area, or campus, I should say, as the Human Rights Commission put together a, it was a declaration of human rights anniversary, I want to say like 45th anniversary, I should know that answer, but I don't. But nonetheless, they put a wonderful event on to just honor human rights and the work that's being done. And then also that same day, had the opportunity to join Representative Rick Larson at a Stuff a Bus event in the local area, which was pretty exciting. The next day, on the 10th, just want to give a shout out to one of our residents and one of our Ivy League members, Matthew Whitaker. He was part of an art show down in the Seattle area, and my spouse and I were able to hop down there and, and support him and the wonderful work that that group is doing. On the 13th, I was able to join online again for Terrace Talk. Way to pull through that one. You got a genuine experience of like, is anyone coming? And then boom, they came out of nowhere, and they all had great questions. So thank you for everyone who took the time to participate in live time or who took the time to listen to a recording afterwards if we recorded it. The next day, the 14th, as many of you did, I had the opportunity to join the employee appreciation breakfast, and just what a wonderful breakfast and time and camaraderie and all that good stuff. I hope my table enjoyed my sense of humor, and Erin and I had the honor of sitting at the same table, so I think we would agree, we had an awesome table. And then that Saturday on the 16th, I think you know I do a lot of different things well, just want to acknowledge, anytime community members are trying to educate themselves, and I, I work with a group, Washington Family Engagement, and they graduated another parent leadership training institute class as well as a child leadership training institute class, and these are folks, the mayor and I actually have spoken to them a couple different times, so we've interacted with them in the past, but really they're residents all around Snohomish County in particular, who are trying to understand these processes that some of us probably take for granted, but they need to better learn them so that they can advocate for themselves, because a lot of times they're voiceless and don't feel like that's where they should be, as they shouldn't. And so learning these skills, both as kids and as parents, they pick real world issues and problems and move forward, and I will just say, from this same group, they actually had a, missed having their first elected official, but they had an appointed official in Yelm, which is just to say, they're doing some great work and everybody's project is amazing. And then I think just to wrap this up, the last one is speaking of engaged residents, just a major shout out on the 17th, I had the honor of serving a quick shift at the Holiday Shed, that two of our commissioners, our DEI chair and then one of our RPAC commissioners as well, the two of them in particular have put on this Holiday Shed for multiple years since the pandemic has started, and they get a lot of support. I bet many of you on this diet support them in your own way as well, and just wanted to say thank you to them and all the community members who participate in making that a success. They will be open again this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They do not want to take anything into the new year, so please, 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 if you've wondered if you should be a part of it, you've already answered it by thinking it might be about you. Show up. They have a page, Mount Lake Terrace Holiday Shed, you do have to be on Facebook to find it, but all the info is there, and that'd be enough of my report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On December 12th, I attended the Left One Retirement Board, and then on the 14th, I attended the breakfast for our city employee recognition and awards. And then on next week, Tuesday, the 19th, I had my one-on-one information monthly meeting with our city manager, and then I also had a meeting with the Arts Commission. Nothing new there to report. Then on the 20th, I attended the walking tour with our state representatives. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I'll make this quick. You know, it's getting late. December 12th, I attended the Park and Rec Board meeting, and I just wanted to thank everyone for passing the tree code this evening. They're doing a lot of good work on that board, and there's very knowledgeable people that attend that meeting. December 13th, I also attended online the Terrace Talk. December 19th, city manager monthly meeting. December 12th, the employee recognition breakfast, that started back up again, and then of course, the work session on December 14th, and I just want to say kudos to the city happenings. It looks great. That's all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll start back on December 12th, where, when, and I'll get to where in a second, when I attended the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber event, and had a really, a number of really fun conversations there and, you know, really pleased to see the amount of energy that, that the chambers sort of building and really hopeful that, that we can turn some of that energy into some, some greater partnership and action across the city and hopefully leverage some, some more sort of community events and programming with our friends at the Chamber. The next night, on the 13th, I attended the Terrace Talk conversation on the 14th. I also attended the employee breakfast and awards as well as, as that evening's work session. And then yesterday, I also stopped by both the beginning and tail end of the Legislative Delegation's tour of Town Center and, you know, really hopeful that, that we can build, build some more energy of, you know, I've seen it in, in the local news covering the, the walk and, you know, I think this, this large capital budget ask that we're making of the, of the state is something that, you know, something I've been aware of for over, you know, is longer than I've been a resident of, of town, and really hopeful that we can find, you know, that state money and also get some, some more attention on, on this sort of final key piece of, of our town center improvement effort and, you know, hopefully we can, you know, reach out to some of our other friends in town to, to raise awareness for, for that need and to get us sort of over the line on that. And I've got some other ideas that I'll, I'll run by the, the city manager, but really well-run event, and that wraps it up. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. All right, Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
Thank you. For the first time that I can remember in over 15 years, this persistent code that I have, and I did not make it to a single, and I had a whole list of, of places to be and things to do and meetings to go to, but I went to zero. I, I haven't been anywhere. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Get well soon. All right, and for my report, very quickly, I also going back to the 12th, attended the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber event. On the 13th, attended the Terrace Talk. On the 14th, attended the employee appreciation breakfast. The 20th, attended the Main Street Legislative Walk, and on, oh, also on the 14th, had the council work session. I believe that concludes my report. With that, unless there's any questions of anybody, I think we are ready to move into new business. Does anybody have any new business? Looks like we've got Councilmember Woodard first.
Oh.
All right, Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Well, I'd just like to, to point out that, that we had a really great crowd to start off the, the, this meeting that, this evening, and for the first time in, in my admittedly short time here on council, I think we had a really clear ask for a resolution for a ceasefire, and I know that's, this is something that's going on on the other side of, of the planet, but is something that, you know, a lot of folks in town feel really compelled to approach us about. So I, I'd like to ask us and staff to, you know, take, take that ask to heart and to consider that resolution. I know it's, you know, there, there are a number of feelings on, on that, but I really don't think I need to say more. I think there's, there's been a, a clear ask for a, a very simple sort of humanitarian and, and humanistic gesture, and so I, I hope that, that we can bring that up at a, at a future meeting to send, send the, the message we're being asked to, to send. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I would second that. I don't know if that's what we need, but do know that covers one of mine. So the second one that I have is equally as asking the city manager to do some work, but on our behalf, and I don't need that, I know what I want to say. I, I want to back up and actually pause in first little levity and first let people know, your mayor is real, that's not AI. I actually ran into her at a coffee shop when she was taking care of her family, so she is sick, but she's also still having to do her parenting duties, so I want to appreciate you and just let you know, we appreciate you and we welcome you back very soon here. That noted, going back to the actual new business, and this really ties into the, the dinner that we had with our neighbors here in Shoreline. Well, they've done something that I think we should consider, which is, they have just recently passed a rent stabilization legislation, I think is the best way to put that, some words around rent, rental or rent stabilization. And I think that that is in our interest to start looking in that direction as well. So I'd like to, one, have us see what that might look like, but I'd also like to present that as a possible working group conversation, because we do have our retreat still, both the schedule, date-wise, as well as I imagine to build out the actual agenda, and I would like to position rental assistance, excuse me, relocation assistance as well in that conversation. So rent stabilization, what does that look like? Because there's a number of cities that are now entering into that discussion or have actually made decisions, in some cases are in the court system challenging that, which is just to say that there's no reason to feel like we're going to be breaking ground here. Let's see what's going on, especially when we're poised to start bringing in a lot of new folks. And then on top of that, again, just looking at, there's some legislation out there now, our city's doing some work around relocation assistance, recognizing both of those are hot topics, so just making it clear that at this point, I'm only asking that we as a council be informed on what that would look like in our city, and then we can decide from there whether or not that's something we pursue. And I'll leave that as my new business.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Councilmember Sonmore?
I'm just going to say it because I always like looking at both sides, and I know the proclamation, we had three people come in, husband and a wife, and one other woman that said she did long-term in our city. One of the things I would recommend, especially for them to do, since the city of Mount Lake Terrace has no fight in the fire of any ceasefires, I know it's important, and she said a lot of things she wanted in the proclamation, and I was trying to write them down so fast, and some of them I'd really have to think about because I didn't understand what she was saying, and understand that what we're trying to do is not to offend anybody in our community either. And I'm not, I'm not saying people want war or anything like that, but that is something to, to make more of a difference just than a proclamation that's just going to sit on a shelf, is, you know, writing the president and Congress, contacting your congresspeople, the House and the Senate, and writing a letter to the president. I know she said the president wasn't doing what she thought, but there's a lot of debates on all this going over, and if you know me, I don't ever like seeing anybody hurt, but I think that would make more of an impact than putting something on a piece of paper, and I, I don't even know how many citizens would even see that, and you were already talking about proclamations for next year, and we were already talking about how we wanted more, so I, I think I'd really like to see the one from Bellingham and Seattle that she mentioned before we asked the city manager to put it together, because I'd like to know a little bit more about it, because there's a lot of different things going on. So, you know, do, do we look at another war that's going on that's doing horrible things? And so there's a lot of contentions around the United States about what's going on, and I'm not saying where I'm at or what I'm doing, I just, I'm saying I don't like war in general, but if she wanted to make more of an impact, that's one of the recommendations I would have her say to all of our citizens is, you know, contact the president and Congress, because they're the ones making these choices and talking about these choices, and there's a whole lot of other things I'd like to say about how people could help with that, but in our own little city, it's nice to say that, but proclamations, sometimes I like to think they're in some of our control and what we can do, and this one is, this one's a big one. So if everybody still wants to do it, I'd like to see what Bellingham and Seattle are saying about it first.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. All right, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you. This could have been part of my liaison report for the Arts Commission, but I saved it for new business. And it has to do with how we had, that's it, I'm now getting proclamation or a declaration, but more of a proclamation we had with Mark O'Connor. And this one is the Arts Advisory Commission and the Friends of the Arts thought about that. And they're wondering if we could maybe do one in honoring Lily Gladstone, past graduate of Mount Lake Terrace High School. She was in the drama department with a proclamation that's similar, given, like I said, they gave to Mark O'Con, we gave to Mark O'Connor. Lily's acclaimed actress and recently nominated for Best Actress by the Golden Globe Awards for starring role in the movie Flowers of the Killer Moon. I know I saw several council members there at the preview. She's also most likely to be nominated for Best Actress for an Academy Award for the same role in Front Runner to win. She had become the first Native American actress to win that award. So, I give that to the council if that's something we'd like to do. We do have a past arts commissioner that knows her mother and, and her agent. And we could pass that information to someone that would contact them on if we want to do a private thing or whatever. I'm sure she's going to be running around doing, she has another venture coming up soon in another movie. But I know she's going to be around sometime on the 27th. But anyway, so if that's something the council would like to do, I could give the information to our city manager. I don't know if we want to do this, you know, right away or just wait sometime in January, figure out when she's available and don't rush into it. Does that, do I get consensus that something people would like to do for Lily Gladstone?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes. I've already thought about that and I, I'm going to be seeing her on the 27th. And I was going to ask her when, when a good time would be.
Okay, that's great then. Okay.
And also a Tulalip artist would like to know if, if and when we're going to be doing this because he would like to present her with a piece of art. So, yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
And I wanted to add to the public comment that we had regarding the Gaza Strip, Palestinians, War isn't fun and people get hurt. But I, I would like our council to remain neutral to this controversial war and, and really kind of concentrate on things that we can control and that are city-oriented. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any other items for new business for consideration tonight? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Mayor Protam. I just want to make sure I said this right. Rent stabilization and relocation assistance. Man, my brain is just like filling words. I'm like, did I say that correctly or did I invert that? So, tie that back in, whatever I said earlier. Rent stabilization and relocation assistance. Sorry, totally feel like a malice equator. Going back to my comment.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Woodard. Anything else? If not, I think we are ready to go home and celebrate the holidays. So, wish everybody a very happy holiday season. Delay, delay, delay. No, we're not going to delay. We are going to get out of here and go home and celebrate and be with family and friends and enjoy the next week plus. And we will look forward to seeing everybody in the new year. All right. With that, I adjourn the meeting. Happy holidays.